It is Tuesday, October 7th, 2025, 7:09 PM. Apologies for the delay, just a few technical difficulties. And this is a full meeting of the Holyoke City Council. Thank you everyone for being here. The Clerk will call the roll.
Annika Berga?
Here.
Bartley?
Here.
Devine?
Here.
Gibner?
Here.
Greeney?
I'm here.
Jordan?
Here.
McGrath Smith?
Here.
Murphy and Bledi?
Here.
Acasio?
Here.
Israel Rivera?
He's here.
Jenny Rivera?
Here.
Sullivan?
Here.
Bacon?
Here.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
God bless America.
And City Council and all its people.
Awesome. Before we do anything, I would, because we have someone zooming in from the body, I would entertain a motion to take a roll call vote that for the purposes of this meeting would be applicable to all motions to receive, refer items to committee, remove items from the table, place items on the table, package items together, comply with items or suspend the rules unless there is an objection. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so this meeting is being recorded. We are also being translated in Spanish and we're live on the city's public access station. So thank you to our friends at Holyoke Media for always helping us out. This evening, we've got quite a few folks signed up for public comment. And I'm going to...
No way.
Where did I put the list?
Oh. Can't believe it.
Got it. We are going to go through the list. And as a reminder, and I'm reading this right from the rules, the City Council will allow up to 10 speakers. And each speaker is allowed to speak for two minutes unless a motion to suspend the rule is passed by a two-thirds majority of the council. Currently, right now, we have 12 individuals signed up for public comment. So I...
Motion to suspend the rules to allow the 12 people to speak.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded to suspend the rules and allow over 12 individuals signed up here to speak for public comment. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. So y'all know the drill. We got, we got these handy time cards, one minute, time's up, okay? And I will keep track of time. And we'll just go through the list. Joshua Garcia, Tudon Ave.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you, Madam President, City Councilors, Mayor Joshua Garcia, Tudon Avenue here in the city of Holyoke. And I am addressing the council tonight particularly to bring attention and awareness to a communication that's in your packet, sent by me, an attachment with two letters on it from our friends over at the DLS, the Division of Local Services. And that letter can't, I can't express any more urgency on the action that we need to take to show the Commonwealth that we are keeping up with our obligation, that we're going to do what we need to do to take care of our financial situations in this community. You have tonight, a coming out of committee, Agenda Item 29, I believe, with a series of changes to our ordinance so that we can reorganize and start working toward better management of our municipal finance as far as the structure is concerned. Not anything we can take immediate action tomorrow on if it was to pass tonight. However, considering that we have a very important finance committee coming up on the 15th to talk about all these things, it'd be great for me to wake up in the morning and call our friends at the DLS that this action was taken and send a strong message to the state that we are on it, that we're taking business serious here and the City Council and the mayor are working together to do what we need to do to let the Commonwealth know that we are indeed keeping up with our obligations. I don't know how many times I need to come in here to express this urgency. Conversations we've had, whether informally or in public, it's very critical, councilors, that we take these matters very seriously and start supporting, whether through these changes or through supported resources, to do what we need to do to help the Treasurer and the Auditor finally conclude this reconciliation issues and get us in a much stronger financial position forward. Thank you.
You had 15 seconds left. All right, up next, we have Beth from Woodland Street. And I believe, yep, it sounds like it's on.
Yes, I'm Beth Strikehers, 25 Woodland Street. So, well, I'm not going to talk about why destroying 22 acres are true canopy...
Oh, can you speak right into the microphone?
...canopy Elmwood Forest is a negative. You already know how I feel about this and how many other ward people feel about this. We have been here before. We have sent emails to all of the City Council several times. I have contacted several people in city government, the mayor, et cetera. So you all know, and you know why we don't want the forest destroyed. What I am going to talk about is I want all the Ward III voters and anybody that's interested in saving Elmwood Forest to research the people running for, the candidates running for office this November. Find out who is for saving Elmwood Forest and who is against saving Elmwood Forest. And then vote accordingly. Vote accordingly. Talk to all the City Councilors. Find out who is with us and vote accordingly. One more thing, transparency. I just want to say that I am thoroughly embarrassed by all the parties involved in this, the city, HEDIC, and the developer regarding transparency. There has been little to none. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Up next is Jordana, Woodland Street.
Okay, I'm short. Jordana O'Connell, 56 Woodland Street. Come closer, okay. I stand before you today not as someone opposed to the sports complex, but as a resident deeply concerned about the current proposal to build a 30-acre facility, the size of a large Amazon warehouse, in the heart of our residential neighborhood by destroying the Elmwood Forest. Let's be clear, what's being pushed by this mayor and his inner circle is not community-minded. This administration, which so often lobs itself on its transparency, has conducted itself in a way that is anything but. This plan was crafted behind closed doors, rushed through with little transparency and zero regard for public input. This proposal is fundamentally flawed. We have empty buildings, vacant lots, and underutilized land all over the city. Why bulldoze the woods? In a town that has unacceptable high asthma rates, we're going to destroy this green space to make way for an anything-go sports complex? One that seems to promise everything to anyone but guarantees little and is shortsighted and reckless. It prioritizes short-term optics over long-term sustainability and political ambition over true public service. There is a growing majority of residents who stand in opposition to this plan. And we are pro-community, pro-transparency, pro-conservation. We believe in responsible development and preserving what makes our neighborhoods livable. So to those of you in power, we are paying attention. Please be aware. We see where you stand. And I'm begging you to pay attention to your constituents. You will remember who stood with us and who stood against.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Up next, I have David. Munson Road, maybe? Sorry.
David, David Owen.
Thank you, David.
It's my penmanship, I know.
It's not you, it's me. All right, hold on, let me just wait one second for me. And, okay.
Yes, I know you have a lot on your plate this evening.
Oh, just state your name and address.
Oh, David Owen, 12 Mason Road, Holyoke. I am short-term resident, about seven years, even shorter term on the Historical Commission. But my reason here, for being here tonight, is, I believe it's Article 71 on tonight's agenda, having to do with civility. I came from a small community here in the valley. And big city politics is not something that I'm used to. But I will say that I have seen things that make me nervous, but that's not my, it's not my job. It's, and I think what I read on the agenda in that Article 71 said a lot of good things. You folks on the other side of this bar have a hard job to do and you're doing it well, along with the mayor. And I would say that being reasonable, having common sense, and being proactive...
One minute.
One minute, thank you. I'll be out of here, I know you're busy. So, that said, all of the issues you have to deal with, I think Article 71 is a good place to start on how to deal with them. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. Up next, I have Orlando, Dwight Street.
Thank you for the opportunity. My name is Orlando Isaza at 1198 Dwight Street. I happen to be a proud immigrant in this country. I arrived here in 1965. And I cannot, I will never be able to be, to express sufficiently my gratitude for the freedom and all the opportunities that I have obtained in this country. I am here to beg you, to ask you to please not instruct our police department to coordinate activities with the federal government, which in this, at this moment, I think is involved in what I would call, and forgive my words, a reign of terror, where the civil rights are being denied, where the due process is being denied to many individuals that are incarcerated without any opportunities to declare their innocence before a judge or a court of law. So I urge you, please, do not become complicit in what I think is a reign of terror that we are experiencing now in this country. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, we have Claire, Ward 6. Just give me one second to restart the timer. Okay.
Hi, everyone. I didn't really prepare anything for tonight. I just wanted to clarify a few things, I think. First, I'm not really sure where are the rhetoric concerning police in Holyoke, working with immigration enforcement, is coming from. I know that in certain places around the country, immigration enforcement is pressuring police to work with them, but that was never our argument. Our argument has been, and will continue to be, that writing any sort of letter to the Department of Homeland Security, which asks how we can comply with their unconstitutional actions, actively endangers well over 60% of our population in this city. And I think that any representative of that population that would endeavor to do so is really, really ill-informed on the current national situation, or if they are, it's worse. I think it would be dreadful if the police force were to start working with immigration, considering the illegality of what they are doing and the devastation that they are sowing, the fear. However, that was never our argument. Our argument is also that we should be declared a sanctuary city. That is never the argument. The argument is that we should not roll out the red carpet for the Gestapo. Nobody should. I noticed a lot of fairly disconcerting items in the agenda that I think some of my fellow community members will speak on. But no, we're not a sanctuary city, but we stand by our neighbors.
It's time. Thank you. Rick Purcell, Suffolk Street.
Rick Purcell, 279 Suffolk Street. Richard Purcell, actually. I'm urging the City Council at the DGNR meeting to motion to leave to withdraw regarding the, in my opinion, racist resolution that's being sent to the two-time impeached convicted felon to help us. We don't need his help. We want this resolution to be leave to withdraw. There was some mentioning by a few City Councilors last night about VTREL on the internet about certain people posting pictures and really file things. That is true, but you got to flip the coin. There's two sides. If you look at the other side, if you can find one side, you can find the other side. And you'll see some really, really, really heinous things come from the right side of that coin. And last, I'm in favor of saving the forests in the wonderful, I used to live in War III, right by that forest. It's a wonderful, I used to walk my dogs up there. I'm in favor of saving that forest because those trees are the lungs of our city. And one more, there was, I had another thing on my mind. What was it? One more thing. I can't remember. And oh, by the way, and let me think about it. On the other hand, never mind.
Okay. Thank you. Emma, Valley Heights.
Hi, my name is Emma Kerr. I'm from 24 Valley Heights in Ward 7. I'm here for the second night in a row to speak about the resolution of not being a sanctuary city. I have read this resolution, I don't know how many times, and I've listened very carefully to Councilmembers Jordan and Vacon describe what it does intend. What they are describing that it does or does not intend does not match with what is written. If this resolution, again, as I said last night, was only to describe us as not a sanctuary city, that is not what is written in the resolution. It is very difficult for me to believe that that is the intention when Councilwoman Vacon has written on her own social media platform more than five times words such as, "Protect our ICE agents, they are protecting us. Thank you ICE agents for risking your lives to save ours." Also, members of the public who have written on your Facebook pages being so excited that they feel like ICE is coming to Holyoke to clean our streets, you have never once disabused them of this notion. Yet you are telling the members of the public in this body that no, we are not rolling out the red carpet to ICE. We are simply saying that we are not a sanctuary city. You cannot both nod your head up and down and then say no with your voice. We are reading, we are listening, we know what this says. Additionally, Point 6 says, "The city of Holyoke and all its employees and agents." You are not the only employees of Holyoke. There are DPW workers, there are historians, and there are 1,400 Holyoke Public School staff that you would now put under the federal law rather than the state law. That is what Point Number 6 reads. What you intend or not, that is what you have written. If that was not your intention, rewrite it, withdraw it, do something else, but that is not what you wrote.
Thank you. Appreciate the applause, but come on up. Up next, Susan, Walnut Street.
Hi, Susan Van Pelt, 246 Walnut Street. First, yes, please protect Elmwood Forest. Second, there's something on the agenda tonight about moving South Holyoke Homes projects forward one more step. And I just wanted to say yes to that. And also, in the thank yous that were going back and forth in committee yesterday, I just wanted to add my two cents that Gladys LeBron Martinez did a fantastic job in the Holyoke Redevelopment Authority and in City Council in advocating for that South Holyoke Homes project. And I wanted to give a shout out to Gladys. Third, please take a second and third and fourth look at your charter changes proposed. Some of those look pretty damn scary. Fourth, I'll take up the ICE order also, or the Homeland Security order. First of all, I want to push back on the idea that there's nothing new in this order. There is something new. The new things are asking Homeland Security to review what Holyoke is doing and make suggestions for what else we ought to be doing. That's totally wildly inappropriate, particularly in the context of what ICE is doing and Homeland Security is doing and the Trump administration is doing right now. We already know that the Trump administration is not a good partner. They take away funding regardless. They are wildly inconsistent. Appeasement does not work. So this order is not preventative for protecting our funding. It's also not remedial or restorative for our funding. The remedy for that would be to partner with the State Attorney General and other communities and sue them if we need to. Fight back. Don't just roll over and roll out the red carpet. Fight back. These withholdings are not constitutional. Congress has approved that funding and it should go through. And all that this does is make Holyoke residents more vulnerable and less safe. It advances the Trump agenda when we should be opposing it. ICE actions are rooted in racism. One counselor said that we should be keeping out of these battles. Well, we can't. These battles have come to us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mimi Panich, 134 Madison Avenue. And I'm here because I was reading through the packet and I was deeply disturbed by two things. One was the mayor's letter with the attachments from Massachusetts DOR, Local Services. That is extraordinarily alarming. I am really very surprised to find that we're not further along with the legislation that we need to catch up with what we need to get done. It's going to cost us rather a lot and probably some autonomy if we can't get that done. And I hope that the City Council will manage to get it through. But the other thing is I noticed a couple of charter changes that are proposed to go through, I assume, by home rule petition. One of them in particular is a charter change that would enshrine our nine-votes-to-do-anything rule. I think that this is, you know, it was a bad thing when it was simply a rule of the council. It was a worse thing when it became an ordinance. It is intolerable to put it into the charter without the public having an opportunity to vote on it. You gave us an opportunity to vote for a tax cut that is saving me $4 a month. A charter change that would reduce our rights as citizens to majority rule is something the public ought to have a chance to debate. We ought to have a chance to decide for ourselves. I hope that this process will stop here. I hope that if it's voted through, the mayor will veto it rather than send it to Pat Duffy. But I hope you reconsider. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, up next, I have Libby Hernandez, Walnut Street.
Hi, good evening. Libby Hernandez, 245 Walnut Street. And I'm here today to speak on the ICE resolution. I moved here to Holyoke in 1994 with my two kids. And this town has been nothing but an amazing town. Very kind, welcoming. I was able to develop here, grow. I was given a hands-up. I became a professional here. And I currently work with farmworkers and immigrant families as a professional. And I have to tell you how sad it is for them and how in fear they are living and their children with the way that the political climate is. And I just want to say that Holyoke, we are not like this. This should not pass, please. We look out for one another even despite our differences. This is a town that's united. And if this passes, you know that the people of color and brown people are going to be harassed because that is what the Department of Justice stated, that they can stop us, harass us, if we fit the profile. Please do not let this happen here in our town in the amazing city of Holyoke. Thank you.
Thank you. I have Jose on Hillside and then my friends on Zoom. I do see you. You are up next. And give me just one second. Okay.
Jose, 139 Hillside. I was here last night and I'm here to say some of the same things. Thank you for allowing more people to speak. ICE is a godless and lawless organization, just like a lot of you, unless you're ignoring it blatantly, see on the news that Trump is a godless and lawless. All over the world, they're breaking the law. They're instructing people to murder people. They're asking in international waters, all over. And they're, they're using our military as like a Call of Duty video game. And I can't believe that some people are still supporting them. But the least that we can do is find a way for our officers, if they're witnessing ICE blatantly violating our rights, you should find a way for our officers that take our money to protect us to intervene. They need to be able to stop them. That's the bare minimum. What you're saying is that, that they're not going to intervene, that they're just going to watch? That's just, that's just like a show. That's my main concern, is to protect our neighbors who are, who are here legally, who are indistinguishable from us. And they're indistinguishable from my kids. And there's bound to be an issue here in town, especially if you're drawing so much attention. So please, the miming, and please don't cut the forest down. I would love a sports complex. It doesn't have to be in the goddamn forest, right? There's a lot of empty lots. And if we can get away from asking Daddy Trump for his approval for his very few dollars, there's actually blatant prostitution. There's overdoses happening every night that I drive by. It's, unless you're not looking, it's, it's just right in your face. We can work together to fix that instead of...
Thank you. We're at time. Okay, up next, I have Victor Machado on Zoom. Maybe not. Nope, just kidding. Okay. So for, hi, hi Victor. So just a reminder, I will let you know halfway through that you're at a minute, but I'm going to have to interrupt you. So I apologize in advance.
Thank you. So thank you for this opportunity, Madam Chair. I would like to talk about the subject. The first one is the petition from Resident of Ward 1 concerned regarding crosswalk at Chesno Aliment Street. I know, Madam Chair, that you are familiar with this intercession. And the residents are soliciting immediately attention from these departmenting departments to provide and guarantee safe browsing for elderly and pedestrians people. Also, I would like to add the subject, the sanctuary city matters. So I have been talking with the residents about this subject. So many people are wondering why we are so worried about something like that they honestly don't understand because we have huge issues on homeless, also in housing crisis as well. So I think the City Council should be think first in the residence...
One minute.
...on homeless and also prioritize the need of the residents as well. Thank you.
Thank you. And then I have Terrence S.
Thank you. Okay, first off, save the trees, we need more of them. Second, just wanted to say we are at a time where the federal government is eroding the constitutional rights of all the residents who live in this... constitutional rights of all the residents who live in this country, and we are seeing this with ICE, where they are abducting people on the streets without arrest, I mean, without a warrant for arrest, without due process. They're just kidnapping them, and that's why we cannot cooperate with ICE. If we want our rights and our democracy to survive...
One minute.
...we have to take a stand. It is up to the people to protect their rights. If the city council is going to budge allegiance to the flag, they need to stand by the values which that American flag stands for, not this xenophobia and fear mongering. You have to guarantee that the rights of all residents are protected. Every action against tyranny pushes our minds forward.
We're at time. Thank you.
Did we get his name and address?
Terrence, can you just say your name and address into the record, please?
Name's Terrence Smith. I'm a resident of Holyoke, under Vacan's Ward, and that's all I would prefer to say at this moment.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. That concludes public comment as far as I can see. Oh, I'm sorry, there's one more hand. Ephraim?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Ephraim Akiva, I am also in Linda Vacan's Ward, Ward 5, and I was here in person last night, so I'm here on Zoom again tonight. I am asking again to not comply with ICE and the federal government and the violence against our neighbors and community members and my friends and loved ones. I am also in favor of saving the trees, and I also am mystified by the civility thing that was added on here as I was here last night, and I imagine that that was a measure put forth since last night. I believe that everyone who came last night was incredibly articulate and really put forth their passion and their love of this city, and we are all part of this city and want to protect our neighbors and stand by our neighbors, and we are calling on the council to do that and stand by its constituents. Thank you.
Thank you. Emneris.
Madam President?
Yes, Counselor Vacan?
I raise a point of order.
Yes.
We have a rule that people need to give their names...
Sorry about that.
I would request that everybody should be complying with that consistently, not picking and choosing who does and doesn't.
I'm not really picking and choosing, and I've said it...
Counselor Vacan, sorry, I don't mean to interrupt, but I'm having trouble hearing Counselor Vacan. Just want to make sure she's speaking into the mic so the public can hear.
And I'll just remind everyone to speak into the microphone.
I was.
Okay, well, if you couldn't hear it, then maybe not. So, yep, I will reiterate, I'm not picking and choosing. I don't have the, really like, the energy to pick and choose tonight. There's like so many things I could pick and choose from, so I don't really have the energy to do that tonight, so I apologize. I will be very consistent, and if someone ends up, you know, takes a village, just give a little grace to everyone who's here tonight because we all care. So thank you.
You're welcome.
Emneris, I'm so sorry that you were interrupted. Can you please state your name and address for the record? Are you still there? If you're talking, we can't hear you. But you are unmuted, so I'm not sure. I'm going to give it just a couple more seconds. Okay, well, I apologize for the... I don't know what I apologize for anymore. All right, so, Emneris, if you are not there, I mean, if you are there, I apologize that I'm not able to figure this out, but I can't solve everything. Okay, so, what I was gonna say... I'm sorry, what? Okay, I'll give it just another second. If you can unmute it. All right, I'm not sure, so I'm going to have to move forward. What I was... Counselor Jordane?
I don't want to interrupt. Go ahead. You were going to say something?
It's okay, go ahead.
Okay, cool. I was going to say, it might be a fine idea if we suspend the rules to take up some items that some of our concerned citizens have come into address. We have, do we have some communications here relative to Elmwood Forest? We also have the committee report relative to the no sanctuary city resolution, and then we also have the resolution relative to civility. I think those would be all appropriate to...
I would love numbers.
Okay.
But first, what I was going to say is just Counselor Devine, your name was pulled first tonight.
I know, I wanted to thank Izzy for doing that.
Okay, good, great. So it looks like the communications from... This would be...
What's that? Hedic minutes, yeah.
All right, so we could, I would entertain a motion to take night... Do you want to do the communication? Okay.
Yeah, I was suggesting, relative to item number 25, we have the Hedic minutes, February 27th, April 24th, June 26th, and July 31st, 2025.
Okay. I would, Counselor, well, can I get a motion?
Motion to suspend the rules, take up item number 25 now?
Motion has been made and seconded to suspend the rules and take up item 25 out of order under discussion, or wait, all those in favor?
Aye.
Just on the rules? Okay. Under discussion, Counselor Ver, you just had your hand up?
Yes, it's particular to the Hedic one. So this is just minutes, or are we actually voting on something?
These are minutes.
So it's just minutes right now, right? There's nothing that we're voting on and that we're taking up right now specifically?
Not this evening.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to be clear.
Yeah, no, that's fine. Did anyone, any other discussion?
Steve? I'll make a comment. Excuse me. Oh, okay.
Do you... Counselor Bartley, do you...
Well, I was going to make the motion. You got...
Oh, we're under discussion right now, but...
Well, the motion's to receive.
Second.
Okay.
And then just under discussion?
Oh, yes, thank you, because we're just suspending the rules.
You go first.
Counselor Bartley?
Yeah, thank, Madam President, thank you, and thanks for your patience. Just want to point out, just for the body, these are public minutes, but we have constituents here advocating for a 22 and a half acre parcel. I just want to point out that in the meeting minutes from Hedic that we received in the clerk's office October 1st, which was six days ago, the meeting minutes are from February 27th. There's no real clear explanation. I don't see any executive statement, but that's almost eight months prior these minutes are being released. The minutes themselves are really pretty striking in terms of what's been happening. And just so the public knows, Hedic is absolutely a public body, but there are no cameras. There's no YouTube videos. It's done pretty much with, there's five Holyokers, all honorable people on the commission, there's no question about it. But I will say this, Madam President, it's so disheartening when you have a 22 and a half acre parcel of land dead set in the middle of Ward 3, and not that I'm a big deal, but common courtesy might suggest that the Ward 3 counselor, and maybe some of the enlarged counselors who give a darn, might have been given a heads up as to this. But that was...
Uh, please.
Yeah, can't do that.
Sorry, we can't do that.
Can't do that.
I love the passion, but we can't do that.
And I appreciate the fact that we have some latecomers and newcomers, I should say, to the Elmwood Forest. That's a phrase that I coined so many years ago, and thanks to the women behind me and the men behind me, they've really taken and run with it. And I really encourage, especially members of this body, but the public, to read these meeting minutes, again, from February 27th that were received here October 1st. It's unbelievable. I'll just finish on this point. The real estate lies is somewhat complicated and incredibly boring, and I get that, but I will, just for the public's consumption, the Hedic board is happy now because they got to keep their $50,000 non-refundable deposit from the petitioner. So Hedic is now up 50 grand, and good for them. But right now, there's at risk 22 and a half acres of woods for a project that could well go elsewhere if somebody would take, you know, bother asking me, but there's no interest in it. It just blinders on all the way from the mayor on down. It's very frustrating, but again, read the minutes and you can learn for yourself. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Counselor Jordane, and then Counselor Sullivan.
Yeah, just briefly, I did want to say, I want to thank the Citizens Group for stepping forward to protect their neighborhoods, to protect this precious resource. If we're going to be a real community, we've got to get to a point where we actually have real planning. And real planning means that when you have either brown spaces or dilapidated areas or areas that need to be rehabbed, that you're putting in new development in those areas. The idea that we just walk past all these other areas of the community that are calling out for rehabilitation, to then go and bulldoze a forest that abuts all these people's homes that they enjoy, that there's wildlife. I was even taken aback by a picture the other day of a bald eagle in that forest. It was breathtaking. And to think that we're just going to run up there with the bulldozers and that we're going to get behind something like that is really disheartening. It's just so, like, we're our own worst enemy if we're going to act as a community like that, that we need to get to a point where there's actual real planning. Meanwhile, right across the street, we've got the Umtine acre eyesore that is the former Kmart, former ShopRite Plaza. Real development means that city leadership, who's paid full-time, full-time economic development director, full-time mayor, are supposed to work with these developers. No, I've heard crazy things. What is Jordane suggesting that we'll have eminent domain over the property? We know that that's a private transaction. I hate when people put out these red herring arguments. Can we have real conversations? Real conversations are, is that if we had our finger on the pulse of the community and had real development, we work with these owners who sit on these properties for decades and do nothing with them, allow them to just fall into the ground. Meanwhile, because we're failing to address that, we're going to help push a project across the street to destroy a forest when we could have a win-win situation that cleans up this disaster that is Kmart. Get rid of that, tear it down. We need to work with whoever the owner is, and if it means we need to exert pressure, we need to have a campaign, we need to build in incentives, whatever this city needs to do to do something with that plaza, solves both. We could have a sports complex there, the whole community could rally around that, and if it's not there, it's somewhere else in the city. This is really about not just protecting the forest, it's about doing real planning for our economic development in this city. And I think the neighbors rightly express their frustration when they see, once again, City of Holyoke making bad choices, and they're saying, whoa, hold on a minute, look what will be lost and could be lost forever. And so I think this is something everybody can get behind to protect this forest. Thank you.
Thank you. Guys, the clapping is like, you know, I get it, trying to just be consistent because I don't want anyone to say I'm not. So I got Counselor Sullivan, and then Counselor McGraw-Smith, and then Counselor Greeney, and then Counselor Devine.
Okay, well, here we go, since I'm the counselor that is on the Hedic board, all right? First of all, all of Hedic's meetings are posted. All of Hedic's meetings are public. Anybody can attend the Hedic meetings. As far as the minutes go, no board member of Hedic is responsible for putting out the meetings, putting out the minutes. Those are the responsibility of the OPEC office, which has had tremendous turnover and unfilled positions for, I don't know how long now, well over a couple of years. So that's what the delay is there as far as the administration of it, but it has nothing to do with the Hedic board members. The property in question, properties, there's more than one parcel up there. The parcel that is partially owned by Hedic and Holyoke Gas and Electric has been advertised for sale for 25 years. So why my question is, is Hedic being blamed and said is not transparent in the fact that something was for sale for 25 years and nobody made any moves or any objections to the for sale sign for 25 years until finally a buyer came along, all right? And the board members of Hedic agreed to a purchase price. Secondly, to another point about Hedic pocketing 50 grand, that is also incorrect. A large portion of that goes back to Holyoke Gas and Electric. If you read the meeting, the minutes which are now available, you'll see that Counselor Sullivan asked about the property that is in land court, and if they can still proceed with their plans, this is the Volleyball Hall of Fame, with their plans if it does not become available. Mr. Ruiz said he understands it is challenging and not certain to acquire, so the plans may have to be redesigned without that land if it does not become available. And the current designs are for nine to 10 acres, not the 30 acres that I hear proposed here. So I suggest that everybody take a deep breath, go back, do your research, and see what's really going on, and there is nothing going on behind closed doors. As far as other properties go, I agree 100%. Myself, I have tried with the Kmart Plaza, calling the number that's listed right on the door there, and gotten no response from these people. And that has been the same for any other buyer, be it the Volleyball Hall of Fame or anybody else trying to do something with that. We've passed, the city council has passed an ordinance now to make it more painful for people to sit on vacant properties. It's a process that takes, unfortunately, well over a year before those fines go out, but before where it was a mere... But before, where it was a mere three thousand dollars penalty, regardless of the size of your, your building, it's, it's now based on the square footage. So the city and the council are taking steps to make things that can happen and make these properties available and, available to developers like this. But it's a process that takes time. That's all I've got to say. Thanks.
Thank you. Councillor McGraw-Smith.
Thank you, Madam President. I want to mirror one of, uh, Councillor Sullivan's point, that we did know this was coming and it shouldn't be a surprise to folks who are suddenly very shocked about it now. This is a parcel that's been for sale for a long time, and the informational meeting that we had in Ward Seven concerning this project, uh, was many months ago, back in March. So, and even in that, that public meeting that we, we had, uh, for the public, in that meeting, they named, we're also looking at the Whiting Farms property. So this has been, for quite some time, part of the conversation that's, that's been happening. I want to name that I'm glad to see some of my fellow councillors, uh, become very conservation-minded, and I would love to see that continue. I have been very frustrated by this body, again and again, with the Dunkin' Donuts project that nobody in my ward wants, not one, at the base of Mount Tom, at the Lynch School that was demolished, which many people in Ward Seven and Six did not support, and this body, nope. We just have to be able to increase the tax, you know, taxes that we're getting from folks who are coming in, it's all about investment, let's just say yes. I'm glad that we're, we finally had a project that this body apparently wants to push back on and say, okay, maybe this is not what we should be doing, maybe we should be listening to the residents in that area for what their concerns are. Maybe we should be conservation-minded. I think we should be. Honestly, I'm frank, I'm, I'm shocked that folks didn't come forward to CPA and ask for the land to be put in conservation. Instead, we voted to decrease the surcharge and undercut CPA by a third every year. That would have been the perfect source of funding to be able to step forward to put that land in conservation. So I would love to see this body continue to be conservation-minded. I hope that we will continue to support projects that come forward to us. But in general, and this honestly means most people in this room, not just pointing fingers to one or two, even the project that came forward a few weeks ago, where we had Kestrel, who was interested in putting part of the land in conservation and splitting it and putting part, part up for sale, there still would have been one house on the property, it was like I was talking to a blank wall. All of you were like, I don't know why that's important. Because it's important, because we should be conserving land in our city that has natural resources and value for passive recreation. And in this room, I think I was the only one that day, that vote too, is given, who voted for that in order to, to work with Kestrel. So I love that we're being conservation-minded, I would love to see it continue past an election cycle, and I would like to see us be more consistent in that as we move forward, listening to residents and looking at whether or not there is real value in conserving the land. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Devine.
Yes, um, thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry, sorry, sorry. I got ahead of myself. Councillor Greeney and then Councillor Devine.
Thank you.
Not intentional.
No problem.
Sorry.
Uh, just quickly, I'm in support of a resident's of Ward Three.
Thank you. Councillor Devine.
Yes, I'm, a couple of things I'm upset about. When they wanted to buy Wycoff Country Club, they had this huge meeting, and everybody was invited, everybody knew about it, and, um, Mr. Ruiz decided he would buy the golf course, and I think it was for two million dollars. But nothing was said about the, um, uh, the forest or anything like that. And what I'm reading here, and by the way, for those of you that don't know, HEADC is , um, Holyoke Economic Development Incorporated.
Industrial Corporation.
Thank you. Relatively small part of this, on behalf of the city, um, is the sale and development of eleven acre parcel, which is being done in partnership with the Gas and Electric as they acquire the land as part of the dam ex, acquisition. The dam was a long time ago, I didn't even know this was going on. Michael Sullivan, with all due respect, asked about the property that is in land court and if they can still proceed with their plans if it does not become available. Mr. Ruiz said he understands this is a challenging process and not certain to acquire, so the plans may have to be redesigned without that land if it does become available in the near term. Mr. Melendez explained that designs currently are for nine to ten acre development with the additional land possibly to support the development as well as to buffer to residents and may include nature trails. Mr. Sullivan noted that there are different zoning designations for these parcels and that a zone change would be necessary. Mr. Melendez said that they would further be, that it be further defined and that they would include the public input. Well, I don't know where the public input is, and it's certainly not these three women back there. There should be a lot more public, public input, so, uh-
I, you're on my list.
Totally against the, uh, sports complex being up there, and I think they are ruining, um, something that has been in their lives for many, uh, years, and it is an asthma-causing thing too, I believe. So, thank you.
Thank you. I have Councillor Sullivan, and Councillor Greeney, I have you on my list. Yep.
Yeah, thank you. Um, a couple of the councillors have covered a couple of the points I wanted to make, but as far as public input, the, the other twenty-two acres that are in land court, right? First of all, once they're acquired, they have to go through a, uh, public, a public disposition process. That does not guarantee any group will get it. It has to be declared surplus, uh, and, you know, then put out for public bid. The, uh, the other point is, it's also gonna require a zoning change, and that's the real venue for public input, would be on a zoning change. This parcel is zoned RA, residential agriculture, or AR, agriculture residential. That's a tough change, that's a tough hurdle for anybody to get over, and that's really where this battle, if, if there is ever to be a battle, should be fought. And that is, to me, is where the, uh, public input arena is gonna be most effective.
Thank you. Councillor Greeney.
Yeah, just quickly, this isn't a new issue. This issue has been going on for at least six months, maybe eight months. I've had meetings with the residents over there, at least one from the get-go early about, about the zoning and everything else and about their, their concern about this, their forest being dissipated for the Volleyball Hall of Fame. So this isn't a new issue, or this isn't a new issue that just happened overnight. This has been going on for months.
Thank you. Councillor Jordan and then Councillor Rivera.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify one point, uh, one of our colleagues made, and this was relative to the CPA tax reduction. Um, let us all be crystal clear what this council did. This council ultimately, uh, through the encouragement of the courts, ultimately put this issue before the voters. We allowed the public to actually vote. We had to overcome a mayoral veto to actually allow the public to vote on their own taxes. And there was a notion that we didn't wanna, some didn't want to have it in a city election and kept it off the ballot. Then they wanted it to be on the presidential ballot. Under the theory, I believe, that they thought the electorate might do something other than what they ultimately did. And when it went to the ballot, two-thirds of the residents of Holyoke voted to cut the CPA tax. That's not the council that cut the tax. This is the people's government. We don't tell them what they do. They are the bosses, we are the servants. They voted to reduce the CPA tax. So if anyone has an issue with the CPA tax reduction, I say take it up with two-thirds of the people of Holyoke. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Rivera, and then Councillor Devine, and then I'm really hoping, uh, everyone's had like two, turn, at least one turn to talk. This is your first time chiming in, so Councillor Rivera has the floor.
Just to be clear, last night, there was a lot of people that expressed opinion too, so there are other people too as well, so we should be listening to all the people in the whole city, just in general. But I think particularly with regards to this particular item, just to stay on this task, right, not another seat, no other other task or other items, um, then I think if, if it's a concern, then what is the process, I think, for us to just make it conservation land? Because even if, let's say the project falls through, and that doesn't happen, right? Someone else will come and try and buy it in the future. So if the argument is to make it commerce, conservation land, then that order should be filed for it to be that now and find the process of that. Like, let's be real, call a spade a spade, let's not play games. If we really want to make it conservation land, then go ahead and do that, and let's do the process. Let's not just play political games and put out banter for the moment, because technically we're not gonna be voting on this for the next three or four years, if anything, right? At the moment, we, we're talking about minutes, and it's caused, caused this much time taken up within, uh, our agenda in a sense, right? So for me, it's, I'll, matter of fact, I'll file the order, and I'll find out what it takes. How about that?
Thank you. Councillor Devine.
Just one sentence, um, Whiting Farm Road, and in parentheses, is USA International Sports Complex. John Dyjack reported that the fifty thousand dollar deposit became non-refundable as of April eighth.
Thank you. All right, on the motion to receive, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Thanks, everyone.
Yeah, I, my next one will be relative, if I may, Madam President.
Yep.
To, um, on the sanctuary city, uh, item number forty-six, I think it would be wise for us to take that up now.
To suspend?
If we may suspend the rules to do that.
I'll second that.
Motion's been made and seconded to suspend the rules. Please hold. Forty-six, you said, yeah.
Yes.
Okay, come on. Uh, I will briefly, or unless you want me to read it in its entirety, I will-
No.
Your, your call.
I don't know.
No.
Um, so, um, item forty-six is, uh, the Committee on Development Government Relations, to whom was referred an order that the following resolution of the city council be adopted and a copy be transmitted to the Department of Homeland Security and our federal delegation and the White House. Um, it shall also be used by departments of the city with their applications for federal funds and grants when necessary. Um, recommended that the order be given a leave to withdraw. And Councillor Gibner.
Thank you, Madam President. Um, so, yeah, last night in our, uh, DGNR meeting, we had a lengthy discussion on this order, um, that was filed in June of this year. So since we took it up, um, last night, some things have changed with the federal government. There was a lot of community representation. What I got out of this was that there was not a lot of community support for this resolution, um, that perhaps another resolution would be better, um, but based on the committee's vote and discussion, um, the recommendation was to give this a leave to withdraw, so that would be the motion made on this item.
Second. The motion's been made and seconded, uh, to give the item leave to withdraw. Um, under discussion, I see Councillor Bacon's hand and Councillor Jordan.
Thank you. So since I was called out in the public speak, I wish to make a couple of statements. One is that, yes, I did thank ICE and the brave officers of ICE at the time when they detained and deported at least five serious criminals out of Boston who had committed horrific crimes that no reasonable person would want to see that person in their community. And under those circumstances, yes, I did thank the ICE officers, as I would thank our police officers in a similar situation. The people that are working for our federal government take the same oath we do to uphold the Constitution, and when they do something to protect our community, I do thank them. To conflate it with the resolution is just to simply mischaracterize, as so many things have been, relative to this whole discussion. And again, as I said last night, I will say again that many of the words in the resolution have been mischaracterized, and it is true that we can all have our own interpretation of what things mean and what we believe the intention of the writer is. But let us keep in mind, those are opinions. There has been many statements, inflammatory statements, calling our government organizations Gestapo, illegal, evil, et cetera. There hasn't been any evidence put forth relative to those opinions that have been stated, that have been posted, um, that are highly inflammatory and misleading. So I just want to make sure that the public is aware, that the words we wrote in the resolution that are available for everybody in the public say what they mean, and they mean what they say. When we are listed as a sanctuary city, which each and every speaker has agreed we are not, it is for the protection of our city that we ask for an explanation of why we would be put on that list. Failing to get that explanation, we could be on the list and off the list at the whim of anything at any time and never have any knowledge of why or wherefore. So my intention relative to the resolution was to protect the city and the funding of the city. Only in this debate have I ever heard that ten million dollars isn't a lot of money. But, you know, I don't know. The goal and the reality that we are living in is that communities are losing their funding when they are not complying with federal law. And as we all know, we all took an oath to comply with local, state, and federal law. Our police have clarified, they do not, they will not enforce immigration, that's not their job. And as I said to the press that didn't get reported, we don't have enough police officers in Holyoke right now to enforce traffic, never mind. So I never did, and my colleague never did, call for any change in the role of our local police. They have more than enough on their hands. So I thank you for allowing me to make those clarifications, and as always, we live by the will of the body. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Jordan.
Oh, thank you, Madam President. So, a couple of things. One is, um, I wanna hearken back to a couple different points. Um, number one is, this discussion starts, and again, I think what's dismaying was that the committee took over four months in order to bring this item up. And it allowed this festering of, what did they mean, what did they not mean? This, if there was any question about what people meant, that conversation could have happened months ago, and we could have had this conversation over the summer, which is when this should have occurred. I think quite frankly, um, if I had to ascribe a, and, and by the way, when I filed it in June seventeenth with Linda, um, I was asked, hey, I think there's gonna be some discussion, are you okay with sending this to committee? Generally, as a courtesy to councillors, people want to be heard, whatnot. I did it, I agreed, I sent it to committee, and guess what happened? That's, that was my courtesy thank you, was it gets buried in committee for four months. And meanwhile, uh, here we go. It's attack, it's all of this type of innuendo, some of it not innuendo, some of it very direct, I'm gonna go there in a moment, um, about where we're going as a community when we have discussions of topics, right? Whatever this topic, today it's, should we or should we not be a sanctuary city? Two weeks from now, it's gonna be some other issue, six months from now, it's gonna be some other issue, okay? The issues keep changing. I've been doing this for thirty years, and I've seen some hot-button ones come through the door. Uh, this isn't a long lineage of those. So I have a perspective of, you know, we're- So I have a perspective of, you know, we're going to be okay as a community, all of us together, all right? We have our disagreements, it's like, you know, you can pick your friends, you can't pick your family. We're a family as a community, we'll get through this together. We have disagreements from time to time, that's healthy. Mayor makes the statement after DHS puts us on the list, says you're a sanctuary city. Whoa, hold on a minute. Springfield steps up, Hoyoke steps up, the two mayors say, no, 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 we're not a sanctuary city. Okay, mayor says we're not a sanctuary city, that's truthful statement because we're not. I didn't hear any protest, outrage, whatever, posters, flaming crosses. I didn't see Josh's picture on any of that stuff. When he made the statement, Hoyoke is not a sanctuary city. Glad. We put here, yeah, we agree with Josh Garcia. Third point. Hoyoke declares that it's not a sanctuary city, that we support what the mayor had said. That's what the third bullet point says. Fourth bullet point is a word-for-word restatement of what the law of the city of Hoyoke is. This isn't our first rodeo. When this got, became a big issue in 2017, the City Council's response to any discussion about what Mayor Morris may or may not want to do relative to this issue, the City Council spoke, and by the way, Mayor Morris signed it, this law, wasn't vetoed, signed. Word-for-word what this says, okay? That is that we comply with the law, all of them. As United States citizens, we don't have the option to pick and choose, oh, this federal law, you know, I don't want to pay my taxes, so I'm not going to send the IRS what I owe them, or I'm going to do this, or I'm going to do that. You're required to follow all federal law. City, state, all laws, we all have that as citizens of this country. That's what that statement says. That's what the law of Hoyoke says, that all of the people that work here will follow the law. I don't see how anyone could possibly find that objectionable. Number five says that if Hoyoke is deemed a sanctuary city by the federal government, as they did, that the burden shifts to them to show us exactly what is the specific violation. And then what do we need to do to remedy that, okay? So they have to prove, the burden is on them, the federal government, making this statement, which I believe is an incorrect statement, that we are a sanctuary city, we are incorrectly on that list. Sixth point is, if they can prove that we violated the law, that we have to comply with federal law. You heard that from the chief. And this is, again, more of this hysteria that gets cranking when people will say, and the Hoyoke police are going to be doing this, and the Hoyoke police are going to be doing that. Hoyoke police isn't going to be doing any of that. And Chief Keenan was right on the money, as he almost always is, if not always is. I'm a big fan of his. He stated, we do not do civil immigration enforcement, but we comply with the federal law and do all the things that we're supposed to do. And he has a very succinct policy. That's exactly what's going to happen. That's exactly what will happen. That's exactly what should happen. It's crystal clear. If we're violating the law, we have to comply with federal law. Chief Keenan does that. He took an oath, he's going to follow his oath, I have no questions that he will. And by the way, federal law applies to everybody that is a US citizen, whether you work here or you don't work here. I don't... Number seven says, take us off your list, we are not a sanctuary city. That's all number seven says. This isn't the least bit controversial, in my opinion, or nor should it be. Because here's the ramifications. And I get it, I want to appreciate context. I get it that some people want to send a message, they don't like this administration, they don't like certain policies. That's all totally legitimate. And you have your right to have all those opinions. However, what you don't and shouldn't do is to subscribe these demonized views of people that are supporting this resolution. That's where it crosses the line. This resolution was designed specifically to protect the 10, over $10 million in federal funds that other communities are at this very hour losing federal funds. Representative Duffy even mentioned that. She, to her point, other cities are losing funds. It's well-known, it's advertised around. They're doing it, they're taking these monies. Where is Hoyoke going to come up with an extra $10 million? We going to jack up the taxes? We going to jack up the fees? We lose money towards our sewer remediation? A lot of this is federal funds that we get? We're going to jack up the sewer rates more? Are we going to start laying people off? How are we going to come up with that? So I think when people want to make this statement that apparently you either think we should be a sanctuary city, or you don't care about the money, or you don't want to clarify this, then I think if this gets defeated, and it very well may, on a seven-six vote here, I probably predict momentarily, then you're going to be part of who's responsible if we lose these funds. Because what they're saying is, crystal clear, is if you are a sanctuary city, or they deem it, and hopefully we will fight them like hell. And I hope that that doesn't happen. Because I don't want us, even though I think this resolution should pass, I can say earnestly, that would be really devastating to this community. I took an oath, in my view, to uphold the fiscal responsibility of this community. Citizens are really concerned about that status and the potential ramifications of that status. Now, let's talk about, oh, residents are all against, or all are in favor of being a sanctuary city because of the group that came in. I'll tell you right now, I think it's had a really, this discussion, to the extent we can call it a discussion, what we had last night was excellent. Really well-me, really well-run meeting, the chair did a great job. Everybody involved, all the participants, everybody was able to air their positions, it was excellent. What hasn't been excellent is, we're going to go on this civility thing in a moment. People really need to think. What are you doing? You can convey your message without de-demonizing, dehumanizing people you disagree with, okay? Let's disagree with each other's positions and not demonize other people. It's fair game for someone to say, you know, that, you know, I have a position in favor of this, that's totally legit to say, you know, if you think I'm wrong on that position, 100% legitimate, okay? What isn't legitimate? Going around town, calling people horrific names that I don't even want to repeat here. Questioning people's integrity. Going around putting posters up with numerous members of this body with flaming crosses. These type of statements are hate speech. These type of statements incite violence against public servants. It is outrageous. I would just ask people, please dial it back, keep it to the issue. Good, bad, whatever, we'll figure this out and we'll move on to the next issue, okay? And I totally respect that. But what we can't be doing is going to you are this, you are a that, you are a this, okay? No matter how passionate we are on that, it's really, a really scary place if we do that. And it's actually frightening. And it's intimidating to the public. So then when we ask, hey, where's the people of Hoyoke who didn't come down and speak in favor of the resolution? Why weren't there anybody here? Oh, you mean when they drive by their city councillor's face, who's put up next to a burning cross? Do you think they want to subject themselves to that? Think about it. It's a devastatingly chilling intimidation tactic against the public and against the people that serve in this room. I have never seen that, and as you all know, I've been doing this a long time. That's a first. I have never seen that. And I hope this is the only time I see that, because if that's where this community is going, we've got way more problems than this resolution. Because we're going to rip the very fabric of this community, because the message is to large segments of the people that live here, okay? That we have different people that have disagreements, you are not welcome. Because if I've heard anything in this debate, we need to be a welcoming, inclusive community. How welcoming does that feel? How do people that are on the other side of an issue, do you think I feel welcomed? Do you think I feel included? I'm, I've been here working for the city of Hoyoke since 1986, in one capacity or another. I've lived in this community my entire life. And yet, I have to be subjected to that type of intimidation, that type of torment? Citizens of Hoyoke, you have a choice coming up really soon. You know, what kind of government are we going to have here? Is it going to be that we're going to terrorize people out of this community? Or are we going to actually be able to solve our differences together at a table in this room by electing the public's choice, whoever that is? That's what has really been the most disconcerting part of this discussion. So the public is going to have to choose soon what kind of government it wants. And as I say, the issues will change. And I'm really proud of the people in this room who have stood against, or stood up to those type of horrific tactics. You know, I think of a person like Howie Graney over here, who has been a schoolteacher for 35 years. And to me, to drive by and see someone's face put with a burning cross next to this guy's? Is this what we've become? Is this where we are now today? And yet, it's under the banner of welcoming and inclusion. Voters of Hoyoke, you have the choice coming up here really soon. And we're going to find out what type of government and how this government should be run very soon. So thank you very much for allowing me to speak.
Thank you.
Madam President?
Um, no.
Point of order, please?
What's up?
There are people with signs in the background.
Where's the rule that says they can't have the sign? Where's the rule? Seriously?
I'm...
Where is it?
What I'm, I'm not...
Because you're asking for a point of order.
I'm not citing a rule. What I'm saying is, the sign being held behind the councillor as he's speaking is disruptive to the message he's trying to give. And our attorney advised us last night that if a sign is disruptive, it should not be in the chambers. Thank you.
Do you, okay, so here's the thing. Just a friendly reminder that I'm running the meeting and I don't have to recognize anyone if I don't want to, okay? And I've been super patient with all of you, giving you all as much time as you want. I literally just gave about 20 minutes to let Counsel Jordan speak. So what I'm not going to do is slow down this meeting anymore with arguments about how I run this meeting. You can run for president if you would like to next, and that's fine. What I'm doing right now, he, if he said to me in the middle of it, this sign's disruptive to me, great, turn it around, fine, we'll talk to the law department, great. I'm not spending, it is, it is 8:35.
You couldn't see this?
Counselor, I'm speaking, I have the floor. You asked a point of order, I'm giving you the response. And the response is, I'm not spending any more time on any of this. If you want to take it up that they can't have signs, go ahead, do it. Vote on it, vote against my decision, we're moving forward. I did not interrupt anyone once tonight. And I just want to remind you, since some of you have never been up on this podium, I can see you when you're talking about me while the meeting's running. I don't call it out, but you guys will call it out. If I was standing up here, making comments under my breath about whatever you're saying. So if we're going to talk about civility, have a little respect for the president. I don't get enough respect. And it's not even like a matter of opinion. People don't, you guys don't say hi to me when you walk in? If I say hi? Please don't.
I said hello.
I understand, I didn't say all of you, I didn't say you.
Okay.
But like, really? You guys see me out in public, you don't acknowledge my existence? Have you ever done that with the president before? Please don't come at me about civility. Do you know how distracting it is when you guys are all talking under your breath every time someone says something? I don't throw fit. I'm done. Up next, I have Counsel Israel Rivera, I have Counsel Givner, I have Counsel Divine, and I have Counsel Jenny Rivera. We're going to keep going, I'm not going to try and slow you all down, I'm not even going to tell you to keep it brief, because I don't care, I'll go here all night, I really don't care. Counsel Rivera, you have the floor.
Thank you. I guess it does feel somewhat of like an abusive relationship with my fellow colleagues here. Only because to say that we've never seen something like this before when it kind of happened July 2021 to me and Mayor Garcia, when we were running our campaigns, someone stole our signs and then spewed racist commentary and then put our signs back up at Crozier Field. There was no comments from the council at the time when that happened. It was silence. And to me, that when the shoe's on the other foot, and I'm not saying that it's okay, this is campaign season. So we make, we got to make something up, right? We have to have different topics or different issues that we want to be able to stand out on. I don't think it's fair to the residents in general to play this game. Like, I constantly say this, like, there are points where we come together and we can do some work. But then there are other points where there's political games being played behind the scenes. And again, I'm no politician, even though I sit in the seat. A lot of people, a lot of people know that and probably have said that about me behind my back. I don't care, honestly, I don't. But the reality is that when we're here with this particular order that was filed, with this particular resolution, if we know that the council already proved an ordinance years ago on this issue, if the mayor put out a commentary on the issue, a lot of the issues are being rectified. There was no need or no instance with regards to putting this forward. If we're citing the funding or the potential loss of funding, there are many other opportunities where we've declined and lost funding federally and we've never put up this much of a fight. I think just in general, we're talking about the $10 million. A lot of that funding is educational funding, as stated before. But my understanding is, we still don't know what's going to happen with the Department of Education anyways. So if we're doing all this and we're doing all this hoopla, and then later on, they cut half the funding anyways because they're cutting the Department of Education, then what? Then what was the purpose behind this? What was the purpose behind the grandstanding and all the stuff? So for me, it, there are some intentions in trying to protect the city. But at the same time, let's not, let's not play games. Let's be real to where we're at with this. It's an opportunity for certain people to push a certain narrative forward. You got to do what you got to do. That's the part of the politic game that we're playing in today's society. But at the same time, it's also an opportunity to create divisiveness and confusion during election season, right? This is... This is, this is what certain people do and they understand these tactics when we're doing this. So when we have these things thrown at us that are not necessarily a Hoyoke problem, or if it is a Hoyoke problem but it's not something that's coming up to us today, it's coming to us four or five years from now. There are certain topics that are being brought down and being addressed. I think for me, this particular issue, it's been solved multiple times already. And for us to pass this resolution, what are we doing? I, 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 I'm just trying to understand, like, are we rubber stamping something that has been stamped before? Or are we actually trying to communicate with the federal government and let them know where we stand on this and what we're doing? Because if that's the case, I can't support that. And like I stated the other day, I really feel that our police department has done a great job building their relationships with the community of Hoyoke. And this particular resolution is creating division, even if we feel like the police are not gonna do their job and we know that they're not gonna do their job, the public doesn't know that and the public does not feel that. So ultimately, what we're putting out there is more fear, fear mongering that's happening nationally to bring it home in for, like literally close to home for us to feel it. And I can't continue to support stuff like that. And I'll pass it because it's been a long time.
Thank you, councillor Gibner.
Thank you, Madam President. Um, I just wanted to mention since um, I mean, I kept it pretty brief because I felt like the discussion last night was um, very thorough. And I appreciate um, the recognition that last night's meeting was, the temperature was pretty cool in here. People were great. Um, a lot of people spoke and there was um, a lot of passion in what people were saying. But I didn't feel like it was disrespectful, it was very orderly meeting. And I'm sure, anyone who's been to a DGR meeting with me knows that if it gets too loud, I bring it right down. I'm not interested, we're not here to argue, I don't like it, the discussion is what's important. I would like to mention that, I mentioned this last night, that item was taken up four months after it was, it was in order. But I didn't feel like it was um, very time sensitive, I really didn't. Um, we have, each subcommittee has a jacket. And in each jacket, there are items that are four months old, six months old, two years old, three years old. There are items that are administratively laid on the table. Two business days before the, the September meeting, I got an email from councillor Bacon that asked me to put the item on the agenda. Um, the agenda was full, I said, well, let's put it on in October. Um, and that was that, I thought that was okay. I apologized, you know, it's pretty common for councillors who have an item in a committee to reach out to the chair of that committee and say, hey, can you put this on the agenda? I was really hoping to have a discussion about it finally. I just did the same with councillor Rivera. He's, you know, Chair of Ordinance, I was like, hey, I suddenly am not working Wednesday nights and I know you have ordinance meetings. Would you mind taking up some of my items because I can finally make it to meetings? Great. Um, so this is a really common practice and I just wanted to point that out because there's nothing malicious going on here. It's just items on the agenda. If the councillors are present, they can, they can try to pull them out of the jacket. Um, in the September meeting, councillor tried to pull it out of the jacket and I was like, well, the makers of the order aren't even here to discuss this. So let's wait, we can put it on the agenda in October. Again, I didn't think it was time sensitive, things changed, we were off the sanctuary city list. You know, it kinda, it's a, it's a mute resolution at this point. So I just wanted to point that out because I don't think it's that abnormal to have items that are a year old in the jacket, never mind four months. And yeah, there's no sanctuary city legal term, we're not on a list um, regarding the federal funding. I, I've also mentioned, we've talked about this in finance, we have grant writers that we finally hired in various departments who are doing their very best to rewrite grants in, in language that is federally acceptable and they're doing a really great job at it. So um, some of our funding has been coming back. And I have to agree with councillor Rivera um, that we're bringing attention and creating, we're kinda creating drama where none needs to be. And as far as this cross burning thing, I haven't seen any of that, I think it's awful to even hear about it. So I'm sorry that's happening. But um, my signs have been stolen every election season. I just figured it was because my name's cocaine. Um, but you know, people are funny, people are not nice, people write slurs on them. You know, we, we need to have pretty thick skin, this is public work. We're working for our communities and we're working for all types of different people. So um, I think it's unfortunate, it happens, we can all do better. Um, but yeah, I just wanted to point that out, there's nothing nefarious going on with my DGR agendas, thanks.
Thanks, I have councillor Divine, councillor Jenny Rivera and councillor Bacon.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm sitting here, we've been talking about this for like a half an hour, I think. And nobody has brought up the fact that we gave this leave to withdraw. Okay, three to two last night. So I would like to make a motion that the city council decides whether it gives leave to withdraw. Because three people on the committee last night, myself, Juan and uh, Cocaine, said yes, give it leave to withdraw. And that's where we are. It's been given leave to withdraw, let's take a total vote and see if we can do that.
Uh, I appreciate that and I do want, councillor Jenny Rivera has not spoken at all on this. Um, and I want to give her that opportunity and we only have councillor Bacon after that. So I'm gonna ask that, I'm, I'm not gonna take, unless there's someone who hasn't spoken yet that also wasn't at the meeting last night. We have heard all of this last night, we did this all last night. Councillor um, Jenny Rivera?
Thank you, Madam President. Um, as I sit here and I listen to how it's upsetting to see signs, to hear the bashing, but it's more upsetting to me, to me. This is my third term with the same candidate that is being supported while from councillors in the same room. In the same room. And this is what is being put on social media about me. Get to know me first before you even talk about me. I'm a drug dealer. I do drugs. The city spiked up, the taxes spiked up in the cities because Jenny, I didn't even know I had that much power. All the spending I'm doing in the city, I also didn't know I had that much power. If I knew I had all that power, whoa, this would not be happening. I am against the cops. Because back in twenty-three, I voted no to the shot spotter. I voted no to the shot spotter for the technology, not the cops. My family has so many cops in our family, why would I be against the cops? The newest thing is that I must be hiding something, who am I protecting? Now, everybody heard my opponent speak English, can't speak it. Very bad. But his Facebook posts are perfect. So it goes both ways because he's being supported by councillors here, sitting and looking at me. So with that being said, just like councillor Patty Divine just said, this was given leave to withdraw yesterday for a lengthy discussion. So I feel we should just move it forward and continue with our agenda.
Thank you, councillor Bacon.
Thank you. I just want to note relative to the discussion around requesting an item to be taken up, yes, it has always been a courtesy of a chair that when the maker of an order requested to be put on the agenda, unless there is some major reason that it couldn't be, that it would be added to the agenda. And I went back and forth with councillor Gibner three or four, if not five times, about trying to get it on the agenda. And in one of the pieces of correspondence, which I posted on media, she had said, if you feel it's an emergency or urgent, have somebody take it off the table. That night, somebody did move to take it off the table and that became another issue. I had specifically requested it and historically, the courtesy would have been given. It just wasn't, it's her call, she's the chair, but it is what it is. And because of the continued delays, the protests that started in August that flamed all these fires continued into September and again throughout the month. Thank you.
Thank you, okay, we're gonna move the question and uh, there was a motion to um, give it leave to withdraw, I'm sorry.
I requested a roll call vote.
Okay, sounds good. Well, I was planning to do a roll call vote anyway, figured you guys would want that. Uh, you want it, so.
I guess we have somebody on Zoom anyway, we have to.
Uh, yeah, so, no, we don't because we did that motion at the beginning of the meeting. The clerk will call the roll. Um, if you vote yes, you are voting to give item forty-six leave to withdraw. Divine?
Yes.
What? Gibner?
Yes.
Graney?
No.
Jordan?
No.
McGrath Smith?
Yes.
Referee Muletty?
Yes.
Acasio?
No.
Israel Rivera?
See.
Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Sullivan?
No.
Bacon?
No.
Anderson Burgos?
Absolutely yes.
Bartley?
No.
Seven yeas, six knees. Okay, with that, it does not, or it does pass, sorry.
Cap, you want to take one more out of order?
Um, sorry, say that again?
I'm sorry, well, I think you wanted one more, you want to take out of order.
Okay. Sounds good, whatever you guys want.
If we may, Madam President. Um, saying with that same theme, um, let's see here, I had an item relative to seventy-one, yes.
Second.
Uh, motion.
To suspend the rolls and take uh,
Item number seventy-one.
Okay, motion was made and seconded to suspend the rules to take up item seventy-one.
If you could read this one, please.
I will read this one and um, I'm just warning you all, I'm gonna ask you to keep your comments brief now because um,
I second that.
I just think it's a little bit of overlap here. Um, but I'm again, not trying to syphil anyone's right to speak, so I will do what the will of the body is. Seventy-one is filed by councillors Jordan and Bacon, request that the city council adopt the following resolution, uh, resolution on civility. Hoyoke is a diverse community of caring and thoughtful people. We are also a community that is passionate about its politics. Politics and democracy can be challenging for everyone involved and that is healthy. However, the public is served best when we as a city have a civil and thoughtful discourse on the different policies and candidates we as a city need to choose from. There is no place for hate speech and extremist language and rhetoric. We can and should challenge different views without demonizing anyone we disagree with. It is critical to the city's future unity that after each election, we are able to come together as neighbors and citizens to focus on what we have in common over what is different about us. While there are different visions for Hoyoke's future that are decided in each election, we are all still Hoyokers who all want what is best for our city. Let's all commit to these principles and together as a city council encourage everyone in city leadership, candidates and the public generally, to commit to them too and speak up for these principles whenever needed.
I'd like to have it received and adopted.
Second.
Um, motion has been made and seconded to receive and adopt under discussion. I actually, well, I'm gonna uh, let the makers of the order address it first and then I saw councillor Rivera's hand. So councillor uh, Jordan and councillor Bacon, I saw your hand, and then uh, councillor Rivera.
Yeah. Motion was, there was, there was a question, Madam President, yeah, the, the request is to receive, adopt and take final action tonight on it. Um, so yeah, just very briefly, because I think you get the point that I was making earlier. So I won't uh, emphasize it too much more. But I will just say that I have never had to file an order or a receipt of resolution like this. And uh, my long tenure here, I think what I'm witnessing occurring, obviously, uh, I'm in the list of the, of the demons uh, that are being alleged here. So it's extremely poignant. I will just say that it's extremely disturbing, to say the least, to, you know, the words slander, defamation, all of those things come to mind. Um, you know, but putting even that aside, just at a human level, you know, we all have families. We have spouses, we have children that drive around this community that go to school in this community, live in this community, have friends in this community. And to think that we have to go by these type of posters, that we have to come to meetings and see horrific statements made about people. That we have to witness statements made online that not talking about, oh, we disagree with you and we think you're wrong because of X, Y, Z, which is totally legitimate. No, 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 you're a this, you're a that, you're a this, and it's so horrific. I will not even repeat these words, I refuse to repeat those words. And then I see them also said about essentially half of the city council. And I even went to the mayor. And and I was really kinda disappointed that he didn't speak up and say, you know what, look, you know, he's got a total great spot, he's unopposed, he could be magnanimous, he could say, you know, look, um, we can all disagree, but as a community, you know, we need to not go to that level. And we need to not demonize each other because guess what? There is a tomorrow. And the tomorrow is, there's the next issue and the next issue and the next issue. And we're all living in this same community together. And if it's going to be that we're gonna really try to destroy people, I mean destroy, your reputation, who you are, we're gonna drive you out of this community. It's almost medieval. It's almost like something out of a horror movie they would do to Frankenstein with pitchforks and torches. I have never seen this type of vitriol, this type of demonization, dehumanization in my career, in my life, in this city. And the question is, where are we going with this? What is the end result of this? And so I felt compelled to say, let's pull it back. And people of goodwill have to pull it back. And all of us, I think, can agree, we're gonna have some dandy discussions in this room. And we're all gonna support this candidate and that candidate on policy issues. And we're gonna have, I vote for you and you vote for me, that's all totally legit. Like, you know, I get that, there's half this room doesn't want to see me sitting in this chair. Okay, and that's totally fine. The only problem is the public gets to decide. And for fourteen times in a row, they've made the decision that I should be here. We'll see if they make the same choice November fourth. But that should be based not on intimidation, demonization, it should be based on issues and, and what is best for the community. And that should be the case for each and every one of you, all of the candidates together. So what I, what I'm suggesting is, let's see if we can all, we all have different constituencies. I would encourage everybody to, to talk to other people that, you know, you might be aligned with to see if we can elevate the discussion um, in the future. So I think if we do that collectively, we can do it together. And then hopefully after the election, there can be again, more unity, or at least we can try. And um, that's what this, the spirit of this comes to. And I would hope all of us could feel um, that this is a truthful statement and we can all get behind it together. Thank you.
Thanks, uh, councillor Bacon, then councillor Rivera, then councillor Anderson Burgos, and then councillor Graney.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, while I second the comments made by the maker of the order with me, there's not a person sitting in this room, I'm gonna venture a guess, that hasn't had a sign stolen, hasn't had this or that said about them. We've all been in We've all been in the game, we're not children. We have pretty thick skins to keep doing this in the face of a fair amount of hostility. But since I believe pictures are worth a thousand words, this is what is out in the community, taped in the public with profanity, inciting hostility in the context of attempted and accomplished assassinations in this country. So if you want to talk about raising the temperature, this is the kind of thing that leads to actual violence. This was removed by my husband from a public utility box on North Hampton and Hampden Street. On it is profanity and the pictures.
Counselor, can you speak into the mic? We cannot hear you.
On it is profanity, which I will not read, and the pictures of Counselors Jordan, Bartley, Bacon, and Greeney. Like I said, it's not our first rodeo. I've been subject four years ago to multiple anonymous hostile flyers throughout my entire war. Guess what? Hoyokers don't like this. They don't like hatred, they don't like hostility, they don't like people trying to hurt other people. And that is what this is. So I'm calling it what it is. If you don't like it, fine. This picture is real. The protesters out there last night had a table with this on it, this on it. A counselor tries to have a fundraiser, and people are videoing us inside the fundraiser. Yes, you're in public, you're in the public space, that's the deal. This is over the line, way over the line. And this council can't pass this resolution? I don't see how we move forward in a positive way. This is a minimal step in the right direction. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Rivera.
Uh, not that I'm against the resolution, uh, I would ask or request that it gets sent to committee only because there are other orders that I have filed in the past. March eighteenth, twenty twenty-five, technically, that are, could be coupled with this particular resolution. I'm glad that we're finally on the same page. Um, I, it was sent to public service, Counselor Anderson Burgos actually took it up. The order was that, the order that the Honorable City Council develop a mission and vision statement that outlines the council's goals and aspirations for our community, right? And then the other order was that, order the Honorable City Council develop a list of core values that is developed and supported by all individual counselors with the goal of setting the standard and the role model for our constituents in the future. So it'd be great if we could couple this resolution with those orders and get everything done together so that we can all be on the same page as we had mentioned just previously. Um, I'm not against the order, and I'm not against what's being said, it is a travesty with all this happening. I have kids myself, and I don't want none of this to happen to me as well. So, with all due respect, for me, it's not about being against it, it's about that there is already actually an order around that addresses the same things that are being addressed in this resolution. And it would be a great situation to display bipartisanship in the, in the attempt for us to come together and actually attend the public service meeting so that we can hash this out and actually do this. That is what I'm asking for.
Okay.
Okay. Um, I still have a couple people in line to speak, um, but I also recognize that, that it's. Was that a motion? I, it sounded like a motion, and then there was a second, and I'm not even trying to like do whatever, but like, that's what I hear, so, um, but I, I, I recognize that there is there are still two people that I want to give the opportunity to speak.
If anything I'll clarify, I just asked a request. If it can be requ, if it can be respected, it'd be great, but if not, then I understand, then we'll just take the vote as.
Okay, okay. So, I'm just gonna keep going through who I've got on my list, and then if there's more people who want to say more things, we can do all the things. I got nothing else, nowhere else to be, um. Uh. So, I had Counselor Anderson Burgos, and then Counselor Greeney.
Thank you, Madam President, so I was, I thought, I could have sworn that um, Counselor Rivera did make the motion, and I was the one that seconded. And um, the reason why I wanted to, I rose my hand in the first place was because um, earlier this year, I filed um, a resolution and was directed by a long member of the city council that this is not a um, properly written resolution. Um, reason being that there, a, 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 a resolution should have a series of whereas clauses, this does not. So I think this is a great opportunity for this resolution um, to be take, uh, to be tagged along with Rivera's, uh, Counselor Rivera's resolution or um, uh, order so that we can discuss it within committee, and, and let's just uh, I don't know, see where the council takes this.
Okay, Counselor Greeney.
Just briefly, it is what it is, it's a nasty game, it's a game I don't want to play, but I will, thank you.
Okay, so there's a motion on the, oh, I'm sorry, Counselor Jordan.
Yeah, thank you, Madam President, I would really, really appreciate if this was adopted tonight as far as setting our goals, our mission statement, our, all these other noble things. That unfortunately, I don't know why it's been there for seven months in committee, uh, you'll have to take that up with the chairman, but I agree, we should do those things, I thought you filed a good order. That is totally, with all due respect, totally different than what I'm talking about here. This isn't about what's our mission statement, or, this is about, we're human beings. And we're calling to say that we're trying to have a civil and a thoughtful discourse, not extremism, not demonization, not that, that you just saw from Linda. This calls out for us to speak with one voice, um, that there's just certain lines you don't cross, and when we go into hate speech and extremist language, that's just so over the top, and um, I would really appreciate the adoption of this resolution tonight. I think sending it to committee sends a totally wrong message, whether, I know that's, if that's not intended at all. But we should take that other item up on its merits, and hopefully you'll take it up soon. Um, but this resolution is speaking specifically to this, and it's written in very straightforward, one paragraph language. Um, I, I would really appreciate this being adopted this evening, thank you.
Okay, I have uh, Counselor uh, Bacon, and then Counselor Devine, Counselor Givner. Um, guys, I'm like this close to sending it to committee if everyone's gonna keep doing it, otherwise, let's just, if you want to vote on it, like, I'm not, I'm not, this is insane. Um, I get that we, but like, we've like rehashed the same conversation for like over an hour. I'm kind of just, I, I'm at a loss right now, I understand.
And we just adopted it.
End the motion.
Great, let's just do it.
To adopt, to adopt it.
Guys, if you want, we, uh, you know, let's Counselor Rivera, if you, I, I encourage all of you to reach out to the chair, go have a committee meeting, or whatever, uh, you know, or, you know, actions speak louder than words, though, so if this passes, I will be holding all of you to this.
Nope.
All of you. I don't participate in debate, I know that. But the things that have been said about me, I could have a list. What?
This is perfunctory, there's no teeth in this.
Excuse me, got it. We're just gonna vote, I'm not even, I, I let you all say everything you wanted tonight, but I can't say anything, so, got it. On the motion, uh, let's do a nice roll call vote, because it's a resolution. And vote yes, vote no, the clerk will call the roll, here we go. If you vote yes, you're voting to pass this resolution, thank you.
Devine?
Yep.
Givner?
No.
Greeney?
Out of the room. He's out of the room momentarily.
Jordan?
Yes.
McGrath Smith?
Yes.
Murphy and Melody?
Yes.
Ocasio?
Yes.
Israel Rivera?
No, because it's not real.
Jenny Rivera?
Nope.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
No, based on the fact that.
Stop, we don't do that, we don't do that, it's yes or no, we don't do that.
I raised, I, I'm sorry, Madam.
Bartley?
No.
It's yes or no, for everyone.
Bartley?
Yes.
Eight yeas, four nays.
Okay, it passes, let's move on, everyone, can we do some real work now? Can we get started on this agenda? What's next?
Number one.
Well, no, we, it was, no, we, we only suspended the rules to take it up early, not to pass.
I'm sorry, what, can you talk to me?
Sorry.
As someone who's running the meeting, I understand.
Sorry, was, does it require nine, because we suspended the rules to take final action?
Uh, no, what? Wait, say that again, I'm sorry.
We just nine to suspend the rules, then a majority still to pass.
It's a majority to pass, and we did the, suspend the rules, okay, got it.
So, Madam President?
Yes, Counselor Bartley.
Uh, we've got uh, a bunch of stuff laid on the table here for charter and rules.
Mm-hmm.
What's the pleasure?
What is the pleasure of the body, is, we've got items laid on the table. I'm ta, I'm, I'm kind of talking to, there's the chair as the chair of charter and rules, what's up? What are we doing? Are we laying, are we keeping this laid on the table? I don't hear a motion, so I can move it forward or whatever.
Thank you, Madam President, um, so, and this was why I was so excited to actually get to these items today. So I would love to take
Yes.
Um, item two off of the table, but I'm also wondering if folks would like to take up certain things first or certain things as a package. Um, so from myself, if we're moving through, through things that I think are uh, more clear, um, we may want to come to second later. So, um, I guess for now, I would say, if we could please take item four off the table?
Motion has been made to remove item four from the table, is there a second?
Okay.
There's a second, uh. Let me read it into the record first, if I may. Item four is the Committee on Charter and Rules, to whom is referred in order that section thirteen of the Hoyok Charter, rules of the city council, president, pro tempore, method of sitting, journal, roll call votes, quorum, general powers, no compensation, be amended using the attached language, recommended that the order be adopted. Counselor McGrath Smith?
Thank you, um, so when the committee took this up, um, the conversations surrounded this change um, is around uh, changing the uh, charter so that we are placing the uh, new language proposed from uh, Counselor Jordan into the charter around ordinances. So, the language that is changed, um, is that it then says the very end of that first page, every ordinance shall be considered as adopted by a final action of the city council only after passing the following three votes. One, motion to pass the first reading by a majority of all the members of the city council. Two, motion to pass the second reading by a majority of all the members of the city council. And three, motion the legal form be ordained by a two-thirds supermajority of all of the members of the city council, voting in recorded roll call vote. So the changes there are, one, making, uh, taking the language from our rules, putting it in the charter. And the second change is effectively reversing the change that was made uh, earlier this term, that it is no longer uh, of those present, but of the members of the city council, so the full membership. Um, this was discussed by myself and um, Counselor Bacon, um, for all of these changes, um, Council President uh, Tessa Murphy and Melody was not present for this meeting, um, so this had a support, it came out as a, as a two uh, to zero vote in support of this change being adopted.
Thank you, Counselor.
So the motion would be to approve the committee report and accept the change into our charter as proposed. To the will of the body, I know that many folks could not attend that meeting, and so I would love to hear where people fall on supporting this charter change or not at this time.
Thank you, Counselor. Um, I see Counselor Rivera's hands.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, yep, I, Counselor Rivera?
Yeah, just for clarification, so we're changing from, from those, uh, the will of the bo, of the the council members voting in present to just majority, just in general, just to be clear. Because in ordinance, there's another conversation, and it's the opposite in ordinance. So for in, in ordinance to be the opposite, and in charter to be another way, that kind of doesn't make sense. Just to be clear, just wanted to put that out there.
Counselor McGrath Smith, if you'd like to.
Just in response, if we did agree to this charter change, we would then need to uh, change our ordinances in alignment with it because our charter supersedes the ordinances that we create.
Okay, um, you good, Counselor Rivera, was that it?
Yeah, so in a sense, I just, just for the public, we're just going from changing from the rule that we created not too long ago, which was anyone voting in present to just majority, which means that if, like Howie now, just uh, is not present, Mr. Greeney, um, that the votes will still be nine, even though it's not, they're no longer thirteen members, just to be clear.
Shh, Counselor McGrath Smith, yep.
Yes, and the other change is that right now, the only place where we have it named that it's a two-thirds supermajority vote is in ordinances. This would then be enshrining it in our charter, um, that it is a, a two-thirds vote that is required to make these changes. So that's also different.
Okay, Counselor Bacon?
I would just like to restate that the language in this charter proposal is the same as the language in our rules.
Yep, thanks. Counselor McGrath Smith?
Yes, I think the main argument is just, uh, in our rules, things are changed by a majority. If we vote to put this as in our charter, then that becomes um, an enshrinement of what right now could be changed with a majority vote. This would move it to a permanent place in a founding document that we would then need to go through this entire home rule process again towards the state legislature in order to change it if at any point we wanted to change that number to a majority, or change it to a three-quarters, like whatever that change might be. We now uh, no longer have that ability to quickly do it and, and to really govern ourselves through that decision. We would have to vote to do so, and then ask for the state's permission to, to change it. So it's also sort of a question of, is it so important to us that we want to enshrine it in this document such that it becomes very difficult for future councils to be able to change it?
Okay, Counselor Jordan, and then Counselor Devine.
Yeah, just, just briefly, I'll say, what's in the rules has always been the, the understanding of the city council until recent history, when there's been this desire to reinterpret things in other directions. Um, so, and if you go into the default rules of the state statute, um, too, it also speaks to all the members of the body, um, you know, I could go back, I've, I'm not gonna rehash all this from prior meetings. Um, but if you, you know, I would encourage anybody, if you were listening to that charter and rules meeting, we sat there painstakingly for hour after hour after hour, going through the history, the lineage, the documents, the this, the, what is, what you see in rule one of our rules didn't fall out of the sky. That was ultimately what was embodied by the body, based on decades of practice. This is what we did, then there was a view not even to follow our rules um, a couple years ago to pass a certain item, and it was attempted to be reinterpreted as present and voting. So to move us forward as an organization, we passed an ordinance that currently says present, doesn't even say unvoting. And um, but it is two-thirds, and that's kind of how we did it, to just move forward as an ordinance. And today, as part of the reforms package, um, it is to eliminate any doubt, um, as to what this is, and so therefore, that's why it is with the language that's there, and um, you know, people should vote accordingly to whatever in your conscience you think you should do, thank you.
Thank you, um, if I may, since I didn't get to go to try Thank you, um, if I may, since I didn't get to go to Charter and Rules, uh, could I just say, like, two sentences?
President to speak, since she was not able to attend the Charter and Rules meeting?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, um, I wasn't able to attend, because, with all due respect, the meeting was scheduled with legally forty-eight hours' notice, which is legal, um, it's just, when you have, when you're working eighty hours a week, it's hard to, to be there, and this job doesn't pay my bills, so, I just wanted to clarify why I wasn't there, it's not because this isn't important to me, um, and I will remind everyone that I was opposed to this when it passed before, I think it's a grave mistake, I'm not gonna be voting for it again, um, but y'all do what you gotta do, and, um, uh, when, when I filed the Municipal Finance, or, uh, Modernization Act, it, it was, it was supposed to be about finances, so, um, that is, that's what I was thinking, so, anyway, um, that's all I gotta say, and thank you for letting me say a few words, since I couldn't be at the Subcommittee meeting.
On the motion.
On the motion to, uh-
Although we're missing some members, I don't know who they are.
Well, I guess after this, it's probably not gonna make a difference, right?
Maybe not.
It's just, you know, whatever you guys want, right?
I don't-
Um, Counsel Graney has left, um, and I'm not quite sure we're-
A little worried that, is he okay?
Oh, I'm sorry, Counsel Devine, I apologize, it wasn't intentional.
No apology necessary.
No cho- no picking and choosing, I apologize.
Why didn't you bring up- Counsel McGrath?
Guys?
One, why didn't you bring up, three, four, there, where's all the rest of the language that goes with these? So, right now-
Well, so we do have, I, if I can answer, there, we did get language for these that was sent to us, it's just a logistical answer from me, but, Counsel McGrath Smith?
Is, is the question, Counsel Devine, that you're wondering, where is, like, this is the original, this is the updated, like, to see the difference between the two? That was the, that was how it was presented to us, as it came through Charter and Rules, but the language you have in front of you is just the legal form, and so that's why you don't see the difference named, that's why I was naming what it was, and I feel, I think you'll feel that way through all of these, like, I, I went through them earlier, and just wrote in what the changes were, uh, similarly, because I also struggled with that.
Okay, well, just to let you know, I'm not gonna be voting on probably any of these.
Okay, um, on the motion, I guess to, um, pass, it was recommended that the order be adopted, um, and, uh, the clerk will call the roll, um-
We're on number four, correct?
Yes, we're on number, just number four.
Thank you.
Devine?
Devine, that was, Counsel Devine, that, yeah, sorry, yeah.
No.
Gibner?
No.
Graney?
Out of the room.
Not here, I don't see him on the Zoom.
I think he's gone.
Oh, so he's gone, okay.
Yeah.
Jordane?
Yes.
McGrath Smith?
No.
Murphy and Balaletti?
No.
Ocasio?
Out of the room.
Israel Rivera?
No.
Jenny Rivera?
Out of the room.
Out of the room.
Out of the room.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
No.
Bartley?
Yes.
Four yeas, six nays.
Four yeas, six nays.
Does not pass.
Does not pass.
Motion to take up item five?
The motion's been made to take up item five. Uh, item five, I'll read into the record, uh, do I have a second? Okay, the motions were made and seconded to take up, uh, to take item five off the table. Item, uh, five is, um, the Committee on Charter and Rules, to whom is referred in order that section fourteen of the Hoyoak Charter, "Transaction by council or members in behalf of city prohibited except in case of veterans aid be amended using the attached language, recommended that the order be referred to the full council without a recommendation," um, all those in favor of taking it off the table?
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, um, Counsel McGrath Smith?
Thank you, uh, so when the Committee took this up, we discussed the impact that this has had, the history that it has had over time, um, and also, I think we had a really thoughtful conversation around, uh, the benefits of potentially allowing, uh, certain, um, uh, employees at the city level to be able, uh, to serve on council, um, I spoke to, um, in Springfield, you can see teachers who can serve, um, and so, we talked about that, there are certain employee, uh, categories, that, uh, the, there's a significant difference between what a counselor has control over, versus, for example, the school committee, and that it might make sense for some categories of employees to be able to potentially serve as city councils, c- city counselors. Um, but then, there's also really great arguments on the other side, around why it's really important in order to prevent carnism, to prevent corruption, to prevent, um, anything feeling untoward, um, around favoritism, and wanting to make sure that that doesn't happen. I, I think we had a really great conversation around, like, really wanting to, uh, find, for some folks, a really good way for some categories of employees to be able to serve in the right way, other folks expressing really thoughtful concerns about if it could be done well, um, and it came out of Committee, uh, as a split vote, one-one, and so it came without recommendation, um, that it very much was, uh, a split down the middle between myself and Counsel Bacon, um, around this issue, and I, I really do feel like we had a great conversation, and I, I see, I see both sides, thank you.
Thank you, uh, Counsel Bartley?
Yeah, Ma- Madam President, I'm, I'm just gonna, this is the only time I can do it, I, I literally just heard the Chair of Charter and Rules say, for the prior order, she voted yes in Committee, and she just voted no on the same order she voted on in City Council. I only point that out, because I, I've been pretty much quiet all night, but I heard the most pedantic nonsense from that same counselor, relative to the prior agenda items, criticizing those of us that have been here about environmental issues and other things, now I'm gonna point out, for the record, she voted yes for the prior order in Committee, and literally just voted no for the same order she voted on Committee. That's bizarre work, get your own house together, and then start criticizing us, thank you.
Civility.
That's civil, that's civil.
Okay, thank you. Um, I have Counsel McGrath Smith, and then Counsel Jordane.
Uh, thank you, Madam President, and from the Madam President, uh, to Counsel Bartley, um, I appreciate your concern, um, if you'll remember, going all the way back to when this came through ordinance, um, I was, along with Ms., um, Murphy and Balaletti, the only two counselors that voted no around it moving to it being two-thirds of those present, and I named at that juncture that the reason why was not because I was against it being, uh, out of those present, I actually think that it makes more sense for it to be a clean, it's always out of the full membership, you know exactly what the votes are that are required for everything, it makes it more fair, prevents monkey business. Um, but that I felt like, it did not make sense to enshrine that two-thirds were required, because I thought at some point, we may wanna look at our rules and consider a majority vote, being appropriate for the creation of legislation, which is, uh, what happens in our House of Representatives, for example, and so, because we have other examples of a majority being how you try to make legislation in our country, I felt like, I would like that to be an option for us to consider, that's why I wanted it to stay in our rules, and not for it to go to ordinance, or to Charter. Um, I was happy to have it moved to this body, to have conversation, um, and so I wanted it to move to this body for conversation, um, but very much to the will of the body, there was not the votes to move it forward, anyway, thank you.
Counsel Jordane?
Yep, um, take sixty votes, sixty percent in the United States Senate, to pass, uh, a law. Um, I will just add, um, back onto the actual matter at hand, which is this one sentence, just so folks, uh, are paying attention here, what is proposed is to a one-sentence add-in, um, and there's a little bit of cleanup here, we took out references, I don't believe we're paying anymore, uh, yeah, I don't believe we're paying anymore, uh, benefits for the, those killed in the Civil War, um, so we did clean that up in, in, in this, uh, Charter change, but above and beyond that, really, the operative sentence here is, "No employee of the city shall simultaneously serve on the City Council during their time of employment." Um, this is already an ordinance of the City of Hoyoak, and, um, it was viewed, um, that, and it's been interpreted historically that this is already, from other sections of the Charter, um, already the rule, um, however, so that there be no ambiguity, uh, this one sentence, uh, would be added, so that there's no question whatsoever, not just an ordinance, but in the supreme law of Hoyoak, our Charter, that, um, nobody can be a member of this body while simultaneously serving as an employee, and the obvious reason that that's been a longstanding forever rule, is because of the obvious conflicts of interest. Um, we're here to be the independent representatives of the public, uh, to serve on this body, um, we are not to be in, have any conflict with our personal interests, and, um, quite frankly, without getting in a, a long debate about it, I have yet to see any way you can possibly serve as an employee, and also here, without there being a conflict. I have talked ad nauseum in the past about this baloney shell game, where people say, "Well, I only collect the one salary, so therefore, I'm not in conflict," it's, there's so many ways around that, where what they do easily could just give you, you know, if I'm a police officer, and I'm on the City Council, oh, well, just give him some more overtime, or raise his salary, coincidentally, ten thousand dollars, if you're in the favor of the mayor, and then I just line up everybody, um, to be on the City Council, and I have everybody on the payroll, um, you know, we just cannot do that, and, and we have never done that, uh, praise God, and, um, um, and I hope we never will, um, at least, not with my vote, and, um, I believe we need to be here for the public, exclusively for the public, no conflict of interest, nobody where the mayor, directly or indirectly, can, uh, be responsible in signing our paycheck. Um, that's just unbelievable, you know, control over the council, if you ever had that kind of a situation, your benefits, all the other goodies that come with it, um, it also gets into the situation where, uh, you know, basically handout jobs, "Hey, run for City Council, if it don't work out, don't worry, we'll play you over in, you know, fill-in-the-blank, uh, department." Um, i- it's just racked with ruin, I mean, I could go on all day on this one, um, so anyways, it's already, uh, good news law of Hoyoak, but this is to put an explanation point on it, as part of the reform, um, and by the way, I had a more global approach, as everybody knows, some people wanna reform this column of things, Kevin would like to reform this column of things, um, because you bring your reforms to the table, and, um, Counsel Jordane has an, uh, a much broader form of reforms, because if we're gonna have a modernization, uh, agenda, then let's modernize all these things that I see are falling through the cracks, or attempting to fall through the cracks, or are these new ambiguities that have come from left field in recent years, so, uh, I'm putting a cork in, in, uh, all the leaks in the boat, if you will, in my, uh, in, in a lot of these proposals, and again, you know, good people can agree and disagree, but that's the intent, thank you.
Thanks, I have Counsel Rivera.
I believe there was a police officer that served as a counselor and as a police officer, both at the same time. To say that, that has never happened, is untrue. It happened, and I believe it happened while some people were on the council that are currently here today.
Donnie, Donnie Welch?
No, that's his name.
Please, one at a time?
I don't wanna throw the name out there, 'cause it's fine, with regards to that.
Keep going, Counsel Rivera has the floor.
So, just, to me, it's, it's, it's such a contradiction, like, if we're talking about a global approach, then we would've referred the other resolution to the, to the jacket, so that we can have a global approach, so that it actually had teeth with regards to civility, right, so that we can actually have a conversation. This is all a contradiction, we, we talk about having a global approach and a plan, but when we're talking about a CAFU, or, and a comptroller, and building out a whole map and a plan, it makes no sense to have a map and a plan for that right now, so then, which part are we taking globally? Only the certain things that are suggested by one particular coun- counselor? That's the part, for me, where I don't understand this, like, for the one hand, it's okay, but for the other hand, it's not, that's not how this works. The, the, the district alone, within the City of Hoyoak, employs, probably, we are the largest employer in the city, is my understanding, right? That's not to say that the top develop, the, the top officers in the city should be running for, for a council, 'cause it's true, but to say that a paraprofessional cannot run for council, or a janitor, right, like, these people have no impact in the budget for education, they can't even vote on it, school committees are a whole separate issue, like, just being able to map out who can and who can, and having the conversation, which is what we're doing in ordinance, which is what we're giving a legal opinion, to see whether or not this is real, or it's not, 'cause when I called, when I was running, to my understanding, from the State Office, the State Ethics Commission, they said I could do both, they said that I could serve, and, um, be on the council, I just couldn't take two salaries. It's just one decision of one particular counselor that wrote that ordinance a long time ago, it's not about a body, it's not about the people, it's about one particular individual that has a stronghold on this community, this is what it comes down to, and what it boils down to. That's just the reality, what it is, some of the, some of us are stepping up, and taking initiative in places that we want to, and try to do what we can, but the reality is, if you look at the whole Modernization Act, when we say reforms, reforms are coming from who? A counselor, or from department heads? Who works day-to-day here? A counselor, or department heads? In your day-to-day job, where you are a director or a leader, do we have board members creating reforms for you in your day-to-day work? Or are you suggesting reforms to the board members that they would take heed to, because it's your day-to-day work? That's, I think that's, like, the crux of this problem that we have here, right, with regards to civility, with regards to everyone coming together to work together, we, as a council, work with so much power, or believe we have so much power, because we do when it comes to voting for finances, and giving someone an approving, approving their finances, with regards to budgets and all the other stuff, and writing policy, but the reality is, day-to-day, we can't do nothing, day-to-day, the resolution that was just passed, where's the teeth? What are we talking about? We don't even know what, what it is, that the overall goal of the Committee that we want to push towards to, because we just passed a resolution just 'cause, there was no conversation, it's just, I feel some type of way, you feel some type of way, let's just pass this resolution. Where are the goals? What are the missions? What are we gonna strive towards in the future? It's the same thing here, can we have a conversation about this? Can we work through this? Can we figure out if there are different categories of employees that work within the city, that could potentially do something like this? It's not about, it's about inclusion, right, if we're talking about inclusion, this is inclusion, if you've been mentioning it, throughout, you're all, uh, everyone's been mentioning it, and if we're all mentioning it, then we need to stand on it, this is not standing on it, it's just using the word for, for, for laughs, I guess, I don't know, but that, that's my point, I'm done.
Thank you, Counsel Jordane.
Thank you, um, a couple things, I wanna validate a couple points that Counsel Rivera made, one, he is correct on the Don Welch situation, him and I have talked about the Don Welch situation, I have said, every time he brings this up, "Don Welch, Don Welch, Don Welch", Kevin was one thousand percent against the Don Welch situation, that Don Welch situation should have never happened, was totally, in my opinion, never considered, uh, that was hugely controversial, should have never been allowed, and subsequently, has never been allowed, um, and I was as infinitely vocal, you can call him up, uh, about that, as much as I like Don, he's a wonderful guy, um, about that situation, and, um, I was crystal clear, that should have never happened, and subsequent law departments cleaned that up, uh, from that situation, so, luckily, that's why- So luckily, that's why when I say that I have discussed that, that should have never happened. And to say that because somebody in the course of a hundred and something years, some law department made a mistake on that one individual says, oh, that's it. Okay, then we're just going to change the rules forever and ever. Doesn't work that way. That got cleaned up post Don Welch. And by the way, when I do appreciate, you know, this enormous power that's ascribed to me. Apparently I didn't have enough juice to get seven votes on a sanctuary city resolution. But nevertheless, I, I do appreciate that and I do fight strenuously for positions that I, I support. I will just say, you know, good people can have disagreements on issues. That's not what the civility, I them is about. That's for all the points that were made earlier. We're going to have, and I do want to work on this issue to, you know, but I've listened to all these arguments, okay? We just have a difference of opinion. I think we'll all agree, this issue has been in this committee for ages. We've debated all this stuff. There hasn't been a lack of discussion or rail or anything's getting, these topics have been around for, what, a year? And by the way, I have perspective of many, many, many years where we have debated this topic and it ebbs and flows and here we are again with it. I have no idea what the council's will with this is going to be momentarily. But as, as far as all these other reforms, you know, it's a whole package of reforms. And I, and that's compromise, right? So I'm willing to make compromise on other areas. And you know, people are all free to, to, to do what they wish and vote their conscience. And that's the way democracy works and that's what will happen momentarily. Thank you.
Momentarily, but not quite yet. Counselor Devine and then Counselor McGrath Smith.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm just wondering if we could table what we're talking about now because I have one grant that needs to be passed for $390,000. We also have a Reverend Randall Basset that was in the other night and he's expecting to pick.
Yeah, there's, yes, there's a lot of stuff on the agenda, so.
There's only two that I'd like to take up.
Okay, well, we're still on this one, so Counselor McGrath Smith is next.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know.
I would like to make a motion to extend the meeting until 10:30, given the reality that we are going through these and we need to. They've been tabled for forever. Things have moved out of ordinance, they have moved out of charter and rules. I would like to keep moving forward with them. I would like if we could extend the meeting time so that we can keep moving through these agenda items.
Second.
The motion has been made and seconded to suspend the rules and extend the meeting to 10:30. Counselor Jordan.
I'm going to respectfully decline that on the basis that I think we should table these, all these items, get to the items Counselor Devine is mentioning. Then if we get all that stuff figured out, we can come back. This, this, all this stuff is going to go a lot longer than probably 30 minutes.
Yeah, because it probably should have still been in committee and we should have had more committee discussions about it, honestly. So, you know, and to be fair, no one really respected the time at the beginning of the meeting. So I will also be voting no because if folks needed to just talk and talk and talk and talk and talk for hours, then, and, and no one really respected the work that needed to get done, then I don't really care. And so that's on the motion. There's a motion to extend, there was an emotion to extend the meeting to 10:30. Uh, well, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
No? I'm going to see, need to see a show of hands because I don't really know. So, um, or, uh, yeah, show of hands is fine for me. If you would like to vote to extend the meeting, please raise your hand. One, two, three. Okay. So.
I'd like to make a motion to table all of these items, these charter and rules, the, these ordinance things, all of that and get to, um, I'd like to have Counselor Devine recognize to go through.
There's only two.
Those, I, I agree with her. I think those are important to take up now.
I'll second it, but I think we need the numbers of what we're tabling.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, this is, you all are otherwise.
Point of order?
Counselor McGrath Smith, yes, you have a point of order.
What is our deadline for when we have to get this to the state legislature in order for this to be possible? Or we're going to be?
What is, yeah, what's our deadline? What's our deadline? Our deadline is like three months ago when we talked about this.
What I mean.
Nope, hold on. Our deadline is that in February, we will no longer have a treasurer. I have been so patient while I've watched people on this council move the chess pieces and extend the goalposts and offer compromise and then not offer compromise. And then we've gotten to a hard place. I don't want to be here until 10:30. And a lot of people didn't respect the time tonight. So that's why we're in this situation. I would entertain a motion to extend it to 10:15. I'm not staying here till 10:30. Yeah, it's really frustrating. It's really frustrating and it's crazy with the communications that we have from DLS and I'm not seeing anyone pulling number 41 out of order. That's more important than a grant. I'm sorry. It's a, sure, it's a big grant. It's a big change, but I didn't see anyone pull that out of order. So we're just going to keep doing what, and you guys do what you want. If you want the state to come in, you go for it. I know where I've stood on this side of the issue and I'm taking a little liberty tonight because I really feel over it. I'm just over it. You guys asked me for leadership. I've been trying. Unreal. So what do you want to do? You want to make it, who's making a motion?
I believe I was making a motion, Madam President, to table items.
Already tabled.
We already tabled that.
Oh, did we? Okay, good. Then I'd like to make a motion to go to the finance. Well, you know what, to your, to the spirit of what you just said, why don't we?
Motion to take up item 41. Motion.
What about 19 and 20? And 21 and?
You say 29? Wait, sorry. You said, sorry, Counselor Jordan, you said 19, 20, yep.
Oh, I believe those are the DLS.
21 is also.
21, I believe goes with that.
Yep.
And then someone referenced a 41?
I've referenced a 41.
Oh, I think.
I mean, not 41, sorry.
Yeah, well, 41 is already, yeah, okay.
Yeah, sorry.
41 if you wish, because I think these may all be going to finance momentarily.
They're all going back to finance?
They already came out.
This is a report to committees. So they're not.
Communications.
Some of them are communications, but some's.
Well, if you want, we can do them separately.
I, yeah, that's.
All right, so 19, 20 and 21?
Sorry, sorry. 68 through 70, that's what I was looking at.
Oh, 68 through 70, what's going on there?
Wait, no, that's finance. 68 through 70 is finance, which yes, we will get to finance. We will get to finance.
I think we're staying with 19, 20 and 21 at the moment.
Second.
Okay. Motion has been made and seconded to suspend the rules, take items 19, 20, 21, 41. Did I miss anything? Did I miss anything?
You put 41 in there as well or just 21?
I put 21 and 41. I see Counselor McGrath Smith's hand, sorry.
Think, is this under discussion?
Yeah, uh, well.
The motion is to send that package to finance is my motion.
41 is not, but 41 is not going to finance. Wait, you also have your late files, Counselor Jordan.
Yeah, eventually we should get to that too.
We have four minutes.
Okay.
Well, we could do all those late files with this package of 19, 20 and 21 because this is.
Let's do that, 19 through 21, we'll do that first. Is that Counselor McGrath Smith?
Thank you. So we spent a lot of time, I know the, our Madam President has already named it, spending a lot of time talking about other things that were ideological in nature. The thing that I was trying to move us forward back to is now let's start doing the things because the reality is that we spent a lot of time talking about stuff that didn't feel pressing and yet this stuff matters. So we have these letters in the DLS. As my very first meeting as a counselor at a training, at a statewide training, Holyoke was used as the example of a city that needed stronger internal controls and that was probably the strongest candidate across the state for a CAFO and for a total reorganization of our finance department. This was my first state training and people are like, I'm from Holyoke, right? Like they're using us as an example at statewide trainings. This is advice we've been getting for years. This document now says that we are going to lose our capacity to govern ourselves in increments. They've already started to do so, right? It says, please be advised that if you do not complete all outstanding reconciliations within 60 days of the date of this letter, that I may take actions, this is from the state, I might take actions permitted to ensure compliance, including by contracting for any services necessary or appropriate to do so. They're going to start making choices for us because we have not done the things that we need to do to bring internal controls in line. We've been working on this for months. This stuff that I'm trying to move us through, items five, six, seven, all this stuff has been in tabled here for months. And we spent hours talking about stuff that did not feel pertinent, given that we have a very real deadline, that we have 60 days to respond to this stuff and get our, our house in order and we really can't because we should have made these changes months ago so that these internal controls could have already started to be in place. We need to move on this stuff and we have to get it to the home petition process, to the state legislature soon. We are moving to the place where they're going to threaten taking over financial control of the city. They have started it in these letters. And I hope everyone is going to start taking it seriously that we have to start making choices and moving forward. We spent too much time on the wrong things in this meeting.
Counselor Bacon and then Counselor Jordan.
Thank you. So my motion is that 19, 20 and 21 go to finance. My comment is that we have had the vote of the voters sitting in the ordinance jacket to appoint a qualified treasurer for months. The citizens voted for us to do that. Others wanted the whole big package and so that has stalled in committee for months. So don't talk to me about doing the right thing now. Give me a break. And this is a chair who accused me.
Is this civil? I actually just have to know because we just voted on this tonight. So as a president, I'm trying to actually figure out what's civil and what's not.
Okay, if you need to see, this is not.
Counselor Bacon, we heard you.
Well, did you?
Yeah, I did.
Well, you've been chastising me from the chair all year, so what else is?
Oh my gosh, you, okay, you.
Anyway.
I got it. Sounds good. Anything else? You good?
But I guess.
Go ahead. Yeah.
Thank you. So my point is that we've had that order sitting there for months. We could have appointed a qualified treasurer by now. This council voted for seven, six. Six voted for an accountant for treasurer, seven voted for somebody who's not an accountant for treasurer. Here we are. But the citizens voted, they want a qualified treasurer appointed. And we've been sitting on that too because people want one thing, they don't want to consider something else. Thank you.
Thank you. I have Counselor Jordan and then Counselor Rivera.
Yeah, first of all, I wanted to also state that the letter from October 1st was not available. Well, actually neither letter was actually available, but I was provided the September 22nd letter by the mayor after the finance committee meeting. And I was recently, like you were, provided the October 1st letter. The October 1st letter is very interesting because that's new information to the finance committee. One is it states that the state has the opportunity to hire somebody to actually do this work. That's something we should seriously consider. To have someone who's independent, chosen by the state and is someone who they have deemed as qualified to do these reconciliations, we should seriously consider that. I like kind of the idea of an independent review and doing of this work. I think part of the concern, I quite frankly, and I think I've made this point a few times, so I'll just summary of my point. We don't have the quote unquote broken structure. What we have, that to me is an excuse. That to me is when we don't have highly competent people doing this work and, and are unable to perform and get this work done. Mind you, the system of government and finance that we have today is the same system we've had forever. But in it always worked, we always had our free cash and Brian Smith did a great job and all, everything was all hunky dory and now all of a sudden chaos.
Can we send this to finance? I'm having a meeting on the 15th.
Yes, so I'll, I'll pick up this discussion on the 15th.
Great.
Um, and looking forward to that. Thank you.
Okay, so on the motion to send 19 through 21 to finance. Oh, wait. Did I have people in line?
Yeah, you kind of did.
I, I'm sorry.
But I'm going to, I'm going to respect the request.
That wasn't intentional. I'm not picking.
No, 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 no. I'm going to request, I'm going to respect the request of Counselor Devine. I just want to make a point that like if we're going to have one counselor take up all the air in the room every time and then when someone else wants to talk.
I understand.
And we got to find, we got to find.
I understand. I apologize. We will be here all night.
Gaslighting at 100% and, and, and like no one can come back and have rebuttals.
I'm sorry, I did not mean to stop you from speaking.
It's not, it's not you, you know what I'm saying? But I'm just saying in general.
Well, we have, yeah.
But we'll keep moving.
No, it's okay. I mean, this is, we've talked about time limits, but we've never passed them.
Can I have a motion 41?
Second. Wait, uh, we didn't, no, we did not vote. I'm, I'm, I'm right here. I didn't forget. I'm, you know. Okay. On the motion to send to finance, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Counselor Devine, you had your hand up.
For item 41?
Motion to take up item 41.
And I also just got a, um.
Second.
We have to take up item 47 for the clerk.
Okay. We are at 9:57.
So, um, item 41.
Uh, hold on, uh, so the motion was made and seconded to suspend the rules and take up item 41 and 47 as a package out of order?
41 sent to finance?
Hold on, let me just get us to, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. 41?
That was 41.
Wait, hold on, hold on, hold on.
You want to refer it back to finance?
Well, 41 and 47 are.
41 is not going back to finance.
41 is going to finance because the plant's going to be in here and all the other people are supposed to be in here.
41 was discussed in finance. This is a report of a committee. You guys discussed this the other night. The mayor came in and said, please, I need this money because the state is telling me I need it.
And we gave it to him.
That's what this is, right?
But we also, after he left, decided that we would have the plant guy and anybody else that we needed to talk to, but we passed the money.
When did you decide that?
That night.
Yeah, and that's what all these other orders are for. And the other thing, if I may, Madam President, be recognized for briefly is.
I didn't recognize you, but Counselor Jordan, go ahead.
No, okay.
Like it's just literally a little bit of respect is all I'm asking for.
No, I, I asked to be recognized. I didn't.
You just, you went, you didn't even give me two seconds to say, yes, I recognize you. Like that, it is the bare minimum.
I apologize.
Thank you.
Of course. So 41, um, what I would like to see that go back to finance for the 15th and discuss it is we didn't have this information about the October 1st memo.
Oh my.
And talking about where, how does that fit with what?
If you guys, if you really want to send this back, you all get to respond to the state because I cannot believe, I cannot. Because I cannot believe, I cannot even wrap my head around the lack of urgency. For the fifteenth is another week, a whole other week. If that's what you guys really wanna do, you go for it. But I really feel a moral obligation to tell you that the mayor was here in this council chamber. I've never seen him talk to us like that before about how urgent it was. But you guys, all right, I'm done. I shouldn't be participating. I apologize. Um, whatever you guys wanna do. Is there a motion?
Yes, the motion is to send forty-one, uh, to Finance. And by the way, there's sixty days to respond, uh, from October first.
Okay.
December first. So, October fifteenth is-
Okay. So, the motion was made and seconded to, uh, send, uh, item forty-one back to Finance.
We have a new memo.
Okay. Sounds good. Whatever you wanna do. Um, I'm gonna keep this moving because it's nine fifty-nine. Unless I hear something else, then this meeting is gonna be adjourned in, like, now. So, what do you guys, what do you, what do you wanna do?
Hey, now that, so that motion's gone to committee. The next-
No, I didn't even get to call a vote on it.
Could you call a vote?
Okay, so, a motion to send back to committee? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
No. Raise your hand if it's no, 'cause I think the ayes got it. One, two, three, four, five, six. Yep, okay. Sent back to committee.
Okay.
Great. And now it's ten o'clock, so-
A motion to extend, ten minutes.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
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 The clerk can have some of these things that are needed, though.
We have a three-
Do you think? Are you, are you kidding me right now?
Coco. We have a three hundred and ninety-
Then adjourn the meeting.
Show of hands.
Whatever.
It didn't pass, uh, to, wait, I'm sorry.
The majority to extend, yes?
I like, literally, go ahead. Uh, motion to extend?
Yes.
That was a motion to extend. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
No. Raise your hand if you're a no. If you're a no. One, two, three, four, five. Doesn't pass.
Okay, all right.
Uh, wait, seven. No, it passes. Six. Wait. It doesn't pass. Oh, it passes, we extend. What time did you wanna extend to?
I said ten minutes.
Great. Ten minutes. Go ahead.
Like this, and that's on the thing there.
Okay. Um-
Okay, I'm gonna continue with this grant.
Go ahead. I'm timing for ten minutes.
Three hundred and ninety thousand dollars, one hundred and forty-nine, thirty, no match, grant to authorize establishment of fund. And this was from the city engineer. And, uh, it's to, what's here? Uh, the maximum award is at three hundred and ninety thousand. Project is to be financed by those funds from the Mass DOT. And that needs to be passed tonight. We had the, um, engineer in, explained everything, and we, it was five to nothing in committee. So, I would like a motion that we accept that grant.
Second.
All right. So, the motion was made and seconded to, uh, I, let me just, can I just finish? Um-
What number are we on?
Number forty.
That's so disturbing. Forty?
Thank you.
Forty.
That's what we wanted to ask.
Thank you, thank you.
Number forty.
So, the motion was made, uh, to approve item forty? Any other discussion? Okay. Uh, the clerk will call the roll. If you vote yes, you're voting to, um, adopt item forty, which is the Mass DOT Local Bottleneck Reduction Program, three hundred and ninety thousand dollars, one hundred and forty-nine dol-, or, three hundred thou-, uh, three ninety, one forty-nine, and thirty cents. No match, grant. Uh, the clerk will call the roll. If you vote yes, you vote to approve. Devine?
Yes.
Givner?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
McGrath Smith?
Yes.
Murphy Rumbelletti?
Yes.
Ocasio?
Yes.
Israel Rivera?
Yes.
Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Okay, with that, it passes. Um, I would, uh, one of my items on here, if we're gonna stay late, is the, um, early voting.
Motion to suspend the rules to go down to forty-seven.
Forty-seven.
Motion's been made and seconded to suspend the rules and take up item forty-seven, uh, out of order and take final action tonight. Um, the forty-seven is to allow for early voting. Um-
Motion to receive and approve?
Yeah, I'm just gonna read it into the record that the city opted into early voting per request of the city clerk. Um, it will take place October twenty-seventh to the thirty-first during the hours of eight-thirty AM to four-thirty PM in the city clerk's office. Any other discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great.
Madam President?
Item number two?
Sure.
Last one we have.
Item number what?
Two on the agenda, or Finance agenda, excuse me. That's a petition from Reverend Randall-
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
What item is it on the full agenda?
Full agenda, it is going to be, oh, item number thirty-nine.
Thank you. Okay, and, uh, he was here. He's doing a, um, second-hand license, and it's only on Saturday, and Saturday from nine to six, and it was, everyone voted for it.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, uh, on the, is there any other discussion? Okay, so, item number thirty-nine is the Committee on Finance, a whom was referred to petition from Reverend Randall Bissett of eighteen-ten North Hampton Street for a second-hand license. Recommended that the petition be granted for the hours of Saturday, nine AM to six PM. The clerk will call the roll. If you vote yes, you're voting in favor of adopting. Devine?
Yes.
Givner?
Yes.
Rainey? Oh, Jordan?
Yes.
McGrath Smith?
Yes.
Murphy Rumbelletti?
Yes.
Ocasio?
Yes.
Israel Rivera?
Yes.
Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Unanimous vote. With that, it passes. Counselor Rivera? I need your microphone on, please.
Sorry. Madam President, a motion to take up items thirty-six, thirty-seven, thirty-eight. Um, recommend that the order be adopted. Three quick, quick ones.
Don't those have to go to ordinance? Oh, no, those are already coming from ordinance.
They're handicap.
Oh, I see. Yeah.
And they're all approved.
Sounds good.
Yeah, I was gonna say that.
Motion's been made and seconded to, well, I would have to do-
Pass the first reading.
Yeah. Um, so, uh, I would entertain a motion, what?
Entertain a motion to take a pa-, uh, motion to pack, package, what is it, thirty-six, thirty-seven, and thirty-eight?
Mm-hmm.
Um-
Take them out of order.
And package them together.
Package them together.
First reading.
And pass the first reading. It's been seconded. Um, any other discussion? No. Um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Uh, motion to pass the second reading.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to pass the second reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Well, should patches be ordained?
Oh, motion that the patches be ordained. I'm sorry. I'm looking for other ones.
Motion should the patches be ordained. The clerk will call the roll. If you vote yes, you're voting for thirty-six, thirty-seven, and thirty-eight. Devine?
She said yes.
Givner?
Yes.
Green, uh, Jordan?
Yes.
McGrath Smith?
Yes.
Murphy Rumbelletti?
Yep.
Ocasio?
Yes.
Izzy Rivera?
Yes.
Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
Thank you.
With that, it passes. Madam President?
Madam President?
Counselor Sullivan?
I was just hoping so we could end this meeting on a happy note. We could hang up item seventy-five, seventy-five for final action and start the next meeting on a happy note as well.
Seventy-five?
Mm-hmm. H G N E.
Motion has been made and seconded to take a final action on seventy-five out of order.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, it's a, that we invite the utility, H G N E Utility of the Year Award to the next meeting to present their proclamation. Um, is there any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion-
Motion to reconsider item forty-one for a vote this evening. Motion has been made and seconded to reconsider our vote on item forty-one. Uh-
Thank you, Madam President. So, um, just for clarity, I think, um, it was a little misconstrued what happened in the Finance meeting. There was a discussion about this. The mayor did come in and present to us how important it was to get the funding for this, um, to pay for contracted services, that there are deadlines. And we agreed as a committee that we would still discuss this item, but that we would recommend that this order be adopted in the full city council meeting and still have discussions in Finance. We did not, we did not vote to send it to the full city council and then send it back for a discussion. So, I just wanted to make that clear, that we did agree on that in the Finance Committee, and that's why I was hoping that we could reconsider for a vote this evening.
On the motion?
Uh-
Oh, nine.
I hear ya. I hear ya. Um, not sending it back to Finance. 'Cause we agreed to, we're still having it. We agreed to have that meeting and discuss it further. But we wouldn't have sent it here without- So, it's ten-ten. Also, just letting you know, the mayor is here right now on the call, which I'm not surprised about at all. His hands up.
Motion to extend the meeting by ten minutes?
Second.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to suspend the meeting by ten minutes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Okay. You got ten minutes. Um, I, all right, so we had Counselor Givner, um, and then Counselor Jordan, I saw your hand, but, and then after that, I'm gonna have Colin, the mayor. Go ahead.
Right.
And please keep it to one minute.
Yeah, basically, uh, as I stated, we did not, at the Finance meeting, we're getting new information coming in after this Finance meeting about the state having resources, um, and able to appoint independent people to do some of this reconciliation work. I wanna see how all of this acts together, and is that possibly a good option for us, uh, to consider? So, the, the, we're getting, we're getting new memos coming in after the Finance meeting. What, well, knowing the letters coming and actually getting the letter to read it is different. Um, you know, I, 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 you know, I don't have X-ray vision. Um, so anyways, um, I, I personally think we should be discussing this all together at Finance next week.
Okay.
You've got a lot of these memos, and for us to go through all this tonight, I don't see-
Okay.
It's gonna be possible.
Thank you. Um, Counselor, uh, actually, Mayor, and then, um, Counselor McGrath.
To suspend the rules and allow the mayor to speak.
Oh, okay. Motion's been made and seconded to suspend the rules to allow the mayor to speak. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor Garcia?
I think he's muted.
He's not. Uh, there we go.
Now he isn't.
Can you hear me? Hello?
Yeah.
The state's not coming in with resources, guys. What the state is saying is you have sixty days to solve the reconciliation issues. Issues that have even gone back to even, I know they're going back to twenty-two. We're talking about since two thousand and seven-ish reconciliation issues that has been affecting our community for roughly twenty years. This isn't a matter about whose experience. We've had treasurers who were greatly experienced, greatly experienced, who had challenges trying to untangle these decades of reconciliation problems that our cities go. What they're saying is you have sixty days, and if you don't do it, we're gonna find, mind you, we had Sarah Hunter. We found somebody who was gonna help do this. We said no. So, now what they're saying is, we'll get the person, and guess what? We're gonna put on your tax rate recap. We don't care if you don't like how much it's gonna cost. That's what they're saying. And so, the cut, the, the, the transfer that I'm looking at, that I'm looking for you guys to support, forty-one, is to get TJ Plant from Open Architects in so that he can start this work now. I don't, I, like I said, the Finance Committee, I really don't wanna wait till the fifteenth and then potentially even risk tabling it there, or God, hopefully, it comes out. I have to wait another week for it to go to the full council. Sixty, there's, and even when TJ does come in, right, like, we, it's, I don't know how else to tell you and explain to you guys, like, how important and critical these things in front of us are. Like, this is not, the state's not coming in with resources. They're coming in saying, "Okay, great. We're gonna, whatever it's gonna cost, we're just gonna raise it on your tax rate recap." I'm trying to get us together so that I can go back to them and say, "Look, we are on it. We're moving. We're working on it. The councils align." And I, watching this meeting tonight, this is crazy. The fact that we can't put our municipal finance above every, this, I really need you guys to move on this. I would hope you guys don't continue to. I've heard the com, Kevin, a lot of the comments you're making, some of them good, other points, I'm ripping my hair off over here. I need help.
Thank you. Counselor Jordan?
Yeah, um, again, um, it would be helpful when we're gonna have these conversations that we're provided all the information and options. I'm reading in this letter that, and Mayor, maybe you can touch on-
We provided informa-, there we go again.
Please.
Go ahead.
Yep.
Sorry, Tessa, go ahead.
Counselor Jordan has the floor. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Mayor, one of the things is, why wouldn't it be better if there's an option to have an independent person picked by the state who they have deemed qualified to do these reconciliations? Why is that not, and we don't know what this would cost. We don't have any of this information. Why wouldn't we wanna consider the independent option versus having your person do it? Like, shouldn't we compare the two options to know what's better? The independent person, the state picks? Yeah, we're gonna pay for either option. Do we know that that's a hundred and thirty-seven? It's seventy-five thousand? We have no idea. Like, we haven't been provided or had even the opportunity to ask you those questions. So, that was the purpose of the meeting, so that we can bring, uh, a review of these letters, which we have not had a chance to review that at Finance.
We're not gonna get, it doesn't, whatever we do tonight, we're not gonna get it done in sixty days. Either way, and it's not gonna, this is an expensive, expensive endeavor. We're gonna be spending a lot of money trying to catch up the two to three decades of issues that have been identified, audit after audit after audit, for twenty years. It's gonna be, it's gonna cost a lot of money, and we're, none of it's gonna get done in sixty days. What I'm looking for is to have someone, you know, for the past three years, I've been trying to get a CAFO. Hopefully, we can have caught up. Sarah would have caught up tremendously. And who knows? The state's probably gonna hire Sarah Hunter anyways. She's gonna be here regardless, probably. I, I hope they do bring her back on. Independent, whatever, Kevin, like, no one here is trying to pick or score one over or anything. We need to get the people to the table and get the job done. Um, the reason why we're trying to get this contract with TJ right now is so that, yes, he can be there on the fifteenth, working for us, guiding us, telling us what to do. He's not gonna, it, you know, it, I-
All right, but let me-
The last time we were in front of the council, we were, we had a couple of meetings and went over all of this when we were trying to convince you how important it was for Sarah Hunter to be there. Now, I gotta try to convince you again. For what? To be told, "I'm not, I'm still not convinced. Let's table it." I'm tired of waiting for you guys. We need a rock and roll now.
Well, you're not waiting for us. You're waiting for the one.
Am I invisible?
All I need is nine votes, guys.
Am I invisible? Do I not run this meeting? My gosh, you guys are wild. All of yous.[1733.71] Am I invisible? Do I not run this meeting? My gosh, you guys are wild, all of yous. Shoot. One at a time. Counselor? Ple- Dude, come on. Alright, so on the motion, we're voting on this. There's a, there's a motion on the floor. I'm done with discussion, it's ten-eighteen. Other, I'm like two seconds away from just doing a motion to adjourn, so don't make me do that. Um-
We-
Second.
Can't ask our questions of the mayor? I mean, do we need five more minutes?
No, because, no, you can't. I'm sorry.
Okay, fine.
You can't.
I can't ask the questions and I-
What, go ahead, go ahead. You need five more minutes, ask the mayor. Go ahead. Five more minutes for the mayor. Go ahead, go ahead. I'll just sit. You go right ahead.
Well, yep, I mean, again, um, what I'm trying to understand is, Josh, I, I don't agree with the characterization that we've discussed these DLS letters. Uh, we haven't, we just received these. Um, but as far as, what I wanna understand is, if we approve the money of the one-thirty-seven that you're requesting, is that in any way, what's the advantage also to having this independent person? Would this person also be doing the work that, that, um, TJ would be doing?
TJ's not doing reconciliation.
So the point is, who's actually gonna do these reconciliations? And that's what the state is selecting. You know, my point is, what's, what's wrong with having the state do these reconciliations and hiring someone that it's done their way, they're competent, and this way, they can't complain it wasn't done the way they wanted, since they picked the person? Like, why wouldn't we want to do that? Why is that a bad thing? I'm just trying to understand.
So, you, so, you want me to invite the state in and put us on a path of receivership? Is that what you're asking me?
Oh, come on.
Is that the direction you wanna go?
I-
I, I don't want the state to do that, because, come on, this is our city, guys. I've been, for three years, telling, putting a path forward to you guys, so that we can do and take care of our own obligations as a city. Do the right thing, be responsible fiduciary agents, and fix our own problems. The Commonwealth come in, and by, by the way, TJ is an independent finance person. He's not, he's in, he's, he's independent. Whether if it's the Commonwealth or us, why wait for the state to come in and tell us and got, what to do? We got the blueprint, we know what it is we gotta do. I need the restructuring, I need the right resources. Now, TJ would come in and help guide a lot of this. Definitely is gonna help facilitate reconciliation, but reconciliation is just one piece of the bigger picture of our municipal financial situation. And so that's the technical, now, coming the fifteenth, what I said at the finance committee was, Trent, move this money, we'll get the contract going, 'cause I, I wanna get this rolling now. We can have him here on the fifteenth, and we can reconcile these, these thoughts and answer these questions, and make sure that we're getting the right guidance and perspective from him, so that we're hitting the ground running, not continuing to delay and to deny and to waste more time.
Yeah, and it, you know, it really doesn't help when you are, if I may, Madam President?
Excuse me, Mayor, that's what we're gonna-
Oh, go ahead, you guys just go, everyone just talk, you go ahead.
Go ahead.
Alright. You know, again, we're trying to have productive dialogue, and, you know, it doesn't help with the accusations and all of that. Let's just try and work these things. People are asking legitimate questions. I mean, I could, as you stated, I was warm to doing this approach, I stated that in finance, and then I'm getting all these other additional memos about the state could bring in a person and do it. You know, we, like, that hasn't been brought up in any of these conversations, so the point is, that was what I wanted to go over with you, and we have not had an opportunity to have that discussion. Um-
On the motion?
But, you know, so, but basically what you're saying then is, if we approve the one-thirty-seven- No, we haven't voted on it yet. We haven't voted on it yet. That's the whole point of the exercise here, is that what you're saying is, they're going to cover and do these reconciliations that the state is asking for? That's part of the one-thirty-seven?
No, the one-thirty-seven is to contract with Open Architects, so we can have TJ Plant in contract, working for us, guiding us as a CAFO and helping with the reconciliation.
Well, how are we gonna get the actual reconciliations that the state wants done? Who's gonna do that work?
There's no way, there's no, there, there, no, we're, we're gonna start doing the work. Now, what the state, what, what they're saying is, and this is not that, they're, they're threatening us. This is a threat that's in front of us. Like, guys, fix this problem, or if you can't contract with somebody, then we're gonna go and contract with somebody and make sure they go in and do it. If you can't do it, oh, and by the way, we're gonna raise in your tax rate recap. Doesn't matter if it's a million dollars, five hundred thousand, if you agree with it or you don't agree with it, we're, we're going for, like, what? That's the dir- that's kind of the, the direction we're going, and I'm trying to show them, look, I have a very supportive counsel that has been helping and trying to understand and doing what we need to do to show that we're being responsible. And for three, we, we've been, and now here we are. So I, 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 I'm ha- I'm, I'm just a little confused in reading you right now, Kevin. It's like, you know, I wanna be in line with you and say, wow, he really is the fiscal watchdog, and he cares about the direction we're going. But now I'm feeling like you're telling me-
No.
The state's coming in, let's, let's open it up, let's hold, let's waste more time, like, I'm-
No, no, no.
I don't know if-
I don't know how you're getting that, 'cause I'm not saying that. I'm asking questions about a transfer that's in front of me, and I'm trying to understand what this letter is about them bringing in resources, so you're-
They're not, they're not bringing resources.
Well, what they're gonna charge you for, when I say that, they're gonna hire somebody to do the work and charge us for it. That's what they're gonna do. And what I'm suggesting to you is, I wanna know the one-thirty-seven, if we approve it, then we still have to pay for this reconciliation to be done in sixty days, or they're still going to do it on their own. 'Cause I'm not hearing you say you're gonna do it in the sixty days they've allocated.
Kevin, there's, we're not gonna get it done within sixty days, but what this will do is show them that we are moving and we're, that, that we're, we're getting, we're securing our quarterback to help us facilitate and guide us. And mind you, the meetings we've had with Deb Wagner and the state, we told them about this, and that we went to finance, and we told them we were able to get support from the finance committee to bring on TJ. When we mentioned TJ Plant, that offered some hope. You know what I mean? That, that's, it's, it's one piece to the puzzle. It's not gonna solve one hundred and thirty-seven thousand for the public that's hearing, yes, to an everyday person, that's a lot of money. That's a drop in the bucket of what I need right now, just to start moving our chess pieces around. Um, the sixty days is gonna come. Great, I'm gonna get the flexibility, thank God, uh, to get more support without having to come to the council. I, I, I wish we weren't here, but that's where we're going. It's great, we're gonna have that support, and hopefully we can finally move in tandem with you guys working on the restructuring stuff that should've been passed a long time ago, but here we are. I told the state, I said, Deb, look, if we can get the pieces, the peop- the, the capacity we need to work on the reconciliation, I know we tried it with Sarah Hunter, we failed there. We thought that maybe we can be creative, we're not, it's, it's a, we're, we're climbing Mount Everest, and, and, and we're almost there at the top, um, even in our shorts and t-shirt. But, you know, um, the council is working on these reforms. This is the, 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 the longer-term objectives. With these reforms, whatever we do are able to fix, we can sustain moving forward, so, so we never go backwards.
On the motion?
Well, then, here, here's what I'm gonna do. I think we should approve it tonight as a courtesy to you, as the person asking for it, but we're gonna have to have a lot of discussion about these memos in the rest of the budget, okay? On the fifteenth.
Absolutely.
Alright.
The fifteenth is a, is a big coming-to-Jesus day. All the councils are encouraging you guys.
Alright.
Please come to that finance committee meeting. We're gonna learn a lot together.
Alright.
Okay, can we, can we vote then? If it's, it's okay with Kevin? We're good? We're good? I'm just, I'm serious, I didn't know if you were done. You guys are still, you guys are going back and forth. I'm literally just asking if it's okay.
It was a nice conversation we just had.
That was great, yeah, like, I didn't even exist, so I'm glad it was a good conversation. So on the motion, the motion was to reconsider our action and take, everyone, half the room's walking out, Kevin. So I'm trying to get everyone to just vote.
Well, I have forty-one.
On, yes, thank you, forty-one. The clerk will call the roll. If you vote yes, you're voting in favor of forty-one.
Don't we, we have to reconsider our action to remove it from committee, right?
We did.
I just said that.
Alright.
What are you, what did you want?
I just didn't recall that vote, that's all.
Okay, so, we're voting to reconsider our action, that's literally what I'm doing. What do you mean?
Oh, I thought you just made a motion to approve it, that's all.
No.
No, I literally said, vote to reconsider our action.
That's fine, okay.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Just wanted to mention-
No, I got it, thanks. Um, uh, the clerk will call the roll. Madam Clerk?
Devine?
Yes.
That was a yes.
If, if everyone's gonna stand up, make sure that you can speak into a microphone, please.
Yes.
Rainey? Oh, Rainey's gone. Jordan?
Yes.
McGrath Smith?
Yes.
Murphy and Bledi?
Yes.
Ocasio?
Yes.
Israel Rivera?
She, yes.
Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
No.
I, I'd like to, um-
Um, hold on, hold on.
Item number forty-
She, we didn't even let the clerk say what she needed to say. Madam Clerk, can you say that again?
Four, eleven yeas, one nay.
Thank you. That passes.
Alright, motion to suspend the rules to take seventy-two, seventy-three, and seventy-four as a package and send to finance?
No.
Is there a second?
The mayor asked us to, uh, send those along to have that discussion.
Motion's been made and seconded to send, say that again?
Seventy-two, three, and four.
Seventy-two, seventy-three, seventy-four to finance. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, it's ten-thirty.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?